Welcome to the May 14, 2024 Milbrae City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. City Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahillan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Feng?
Here.
All members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much. And for those who are April, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. We'll start off with ceremonial presentation and proclaiming the May 19 to 2024 as National Public Works Week. Councilmember Schneider, would you please lead us to that?
Thank you, Mayor. And I am so happy to see all of our Public Works people here in the room. As you all know, Public Works takes care of our infrastructure, our facilities, services that are vital to the importance of our sustainable and resilient community, and for our public health, quality of life, and well-being for the people of Milbrae. It is in the public interest for our residents, our civic leaders, and children in the city to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs that are in their respective community. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. The year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association with the theme of "Advancing Quality of Life." So, Milbrae, the Public Works Department has been advancing our quality of life through infrastructure and amenities, and this year alone, think of the Upper Hillcrest Pavement Repair Project, the Milbrae Library Maker Space, Central Park Tennis Courts and Resurfacing Project, and pickleball, Lincoln Circle Water Line, Street Light and Pavement Rehabilitation Project, Santa Barbara Drive Pavement Rehabilitation Project, the Skyline Water Tank Replacement Project, or just to name a few. And before I... So, I'd love for everybody to come up here and join us or have a few statements, Mr. Batista, in celebrating May 19 to May 21st, wait, golly, 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. And you know, this is my ninth year on council, and Public Works knows that I love them because as in grad school, I studied sewage treatment plants. And I know, Public, that we will give tours of the sewage treatment plant, which is really, really cool, so we should do a few more of those. But, you know, sometimes our Public Works guys do not get the love that they deserve, or they and she, she and he and they deserve on that. So, when you see our Public Works people out there on the street, tell them thank you. We've come through the last couple of winters really well, but in those really hard winters, they were out working incredibly long shifts, often with just a few hours of sleep. They're out there planting trees to keep us cool when we get those next heat waves. So, you've got to just give them all a big hug. Mr. Batista?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Sam Bautista, your Director of Public Works. And I just wanted to thank you for the proclamation, proclaiming Public Works Week for May 19 to 25, 2024. The Public Works staff are a dedicated group of people and women and men who are seasoned professionals or upcoming talent that will ensure lives and properties are safe, that the environment is clean and vibrant, and that we provide a high quality of life here in Milbrae. Here's just a list of few services delivered by Public Works. We maintain and sweep streets, 58 miles of streets, and maintain 1,300 streetlights, maintain storm drain pipes, inlets, creeks, and pump stations, prevent flooding in the city. We maintain and operate over 75 miles of water lines and over 570 hydrants. We implement recycling, water conservation, and environmental programs and projects. Maintain over 60 miles of sewer pipe and three sewer lift stations. Maintain 13 parks and playgrounds. We clean the downtown and maintain citywide medians. We maintain and plant trees throughout the community and remove hazardous trees, especially during the storms. We assist in citywide events throughout the year, and most importantly, we treat wastewater and operate the wastewater treatment plant, our water pollution control plant. So, with City Council's approval, we have several big infrastructure projects in the works. The Near Shore Outfall Project and the Marina Vista renovation project are going into construction in next month. We will have sewer line, pavement rehabilitation, and traffic calming projects the new fiscal year. And tonight, we have about half of our Public Works staff, and I wanted to quickly acknowledge each one of them for their hard work, commitment, and dedication to Milbrae. So, for council and for the public to get to know the Public Works staff, I'll be calling each person up to the States. So, starting with our administration, Heather Ruiz, Vivian Pang, Charmaine Wright.
Go ahead, stand up, please.
Oh, come on.
And we also have Nicole Wang, who's actually over at City Managers, but she's still part of Public Works. Then we have Environmental Programs, Andrea Papajon and Annabelle Acosta.
Come on, join us at a podium, please. Yes.
We also have the Facilities Division, which is Dave Martinez and Evan Ramirez. Sorry, guys.
Come on up. We'd love to have you here.
Next is the Water Division. We have Trevor Lee, Brett Powell, Miranda, and Joe Royas. Come on up. We have our Collections Division, Chris Junior, John Royas, Dave Bocelli, Mario Surtucci. We have Engineering, Armando Mora, Amr Zarika, Christian Alarcon, and Ahmad Hayah. And then with Parks, we have John Gennoli, Miguel Mercado, Philip PJ Piper. Streets and Storms Division, we have Joe Mendoza, Chris Valzon, and Glenn Gonzalez. And then with the Water Pollution Control Plant, we have Harry Kwong, Stephen Carbajal, and Bob Munir. And then, last but not least, we have Craig Centus, Deputy Director.
Good to have you, Craig.
We would love a great, big team photo, but could you give an update of what's happening in front of City Hall?
Sure. In fact, I will, I'll bring the project manager up, but Project Manager Andrea Papajon of Environmental Programs. So, would you like to expand on what's going on in front of City Hall?
And while Andrea's walking, I've had a lot of comments, people calling me or on Nextdoor, so let's update what the exciting program is.
Great. Thank you for asking, Council Mayor, Council Members. Thank you very much for this meeting tonight. In front of City Hall, we, the Environmental Programs, applied for a grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, and we received a grant. The city did a match, and we are installing drought-tolerant planting. It will match what has already been installed on the north sort of side end of City Hall, so this will be now in front of the Sheriff's Office and in front of the fire station.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to make any comment at all?
Okay, go ahead. I just want to also express gratitude to all of you. I, you know, as electeds, I think we hear a lot of what people are not happy about in this city, but I can't tell you enough how often I hear from folks how hard they see you working, how appreciative they are of when you guys are just quick jumping into an emergency that happens or helping during the storms. And so, I hope that those praise and gratitude make it to all of your ears as well. So, thank you, and I really appreciate taking the time to acknowledge each and every one of you personally and by name. So, thank you for doing that, and thank you for all you do.
All right. Sounds good. And I just wanted to say that, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure that has just been talked about, you know, between the water, the sewer, the storm drain, and the parks, and all of this, while the public expect all of this to work.
Right.
Whether it's rain or shine, they just expect these things to... When they turn on the faucet, they expect clean water. And when they flush the toilet, they expect it to go away. And, you know, when they take their pet to a park, they expect everything is in pristine condition. And they are. And it's because, not because it just happened to be there, it's because all of you, all the heroes behind the scene have worked very hard day in and day out, making this as best as it can possibly be and as available as it can possibly be to all of our residents and to every single one of them, because you're dedicated to your job and you feel compelled to do your best. And on behalf of the entire city, on behalf of the entire grateful city, I want to thank all of you for all you do every day. Thank you so very much. You are truly our unsung hero, and also the leadership of Director Batista as well. So, thank you all. Yes. Yeah, I'll be right, yeah. There you go. Please, join all of us. Mr. Batista, this Papajon. There you go. I don't know if we have enough space for all of it, but here we go. All right, you know what? I'm going to stand. As your mayor, I'm going to be standing up with all of you.
Well, I was going to talk to you guys about the...
Sam? Sam, come on here.
What are we doing here?
I'm standing up because they work hard every day. I can work hard for the next 25 seconds. Here we go.
I'm actually great. I mean, it's been a week and a half since I've been here.
Oh, here's the guy. All right. Yay. That's right. Here we go.
Don't be shy.
Public Works. Milbrae Public Works. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, thank you. How you doing, young man? Thank you so much.
You had your first council meeting?
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So, it was a week ago Monday. So, how'd you do? Scary? Is it scary being on this side? You'll be great.
Thank you, thank you.
We're very happy for you, so...
All right. Thank you all.
Great job.
That took scare half the room.
Well, that means public comment won't be quite so scary.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, all right. Agenda item number two, this is the agenda overview and the staff briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide a city manager update and also report out on May 14, 2024, closed session, please?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. I'll report out on closed session. There is no reportable action of the closed session this evening. So, on to the events in Milbrae. This past Saturday, the association with the San Mateo Sheriff's Office, our Bureau Chief, Eamon Allen, in partnership with the California Highway Patrol, they gave away almost 250, 300 helmets, which was fantastic. Milbrae School District, the Milbrae Lions, and Leo's Club were there to cook. Cert volunteers were there. They had a booth, which was fantastic. Also, our Park and Rec Commissioners were there in attendance, and it was just a terrific day. It was at Taylor Middle School. There were a lot of younger kids, elementary school, some teens, and a lot of families in attendance. And so, there was an obstacle course that was set up, safety training, education for bicycle riders. So, it was just a terrific event, and I would like to actually commend Chief Allen for his coordination and the great work he did. It was just a terrific event. So, hats off to Chief Allen and all of his crew from the Sheriff's Office. So, thank you for that. Also, Green Hills Park Trail Rehabilitation Project over at Green Hills Park, that project just started yesterday, Monday, May 13th, and this is to repair the deteriorated asphalt and concrete pathway throughout the park. The rehab project will improve the trail, avoiding trip hazards and other things, and part of that trail will be closed to the public while this work is going on. So, it's expected to be completed and reopened June 11th. So, we appreciate everybody's patience and ask people to staff the trail as the new material's curing for the opening June 11th. Also, our commission and committee recruitment is ongoing. We have an, we call it annual recruitment, but it's actually an ongoing recruitment for commission and committee members, so we invite anybody that's interested in shaping the community through service on one of our eight commissions and advisory committees to submit an application. You can go on to the city's website, City Clerk's Office. It's just City of Milbrae or milbrae.com. We have openings in Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, Senior Advisory Committee, Sister Cities Commission and Youth Advisory Committee. Okay, so for upcoming events, as my last report, we're starting to get busy. Wednesday, tomorrow, May 15th, at 6:00 PM, we have an informational meeting on the fire assessment, and that starts at 6:00 PM. That will be held in Library Room A and B. So, I encourage everyone that has questions or that has made comments to please attend this meeting tomorrow evening at the Milbrae Library, starting at 6:00 PM, informational meeting on the fire assessment. We also have another meeting on Saturday, June 1st. That starts at 10:00 AM, and that will be in the David J. Chacuti Room. So, again, anything, any questions that anybody has about the fire assessment, the upcoming Citizens Oversight Committee, if it passes, but this is a very important meeting. The ballots are out, but as it's ongoing, because there's a 45-day voting period, we really would like to see a good showing of people interested in getting their questions answered. Monday, June 3rd, it's starting at 12:00 PM, 12 to 7:00 PM, is the Milbrae Rotary Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. That's Rotary Club in association with the City of Milbrae. It's a fundraiser where half of the proceeds do go to the City of Milbrae for recreation and youth programs. This is the sixth year. We've been averaging $11,000 to $15,000 in net contributions to the city as a result of this golf tournament. So, we're very excited. People can still register at bit.ly/MILgolf. Again, bit.ly/MILgolf. It's at Green Hills Country Club, and so for all the golfers and duffers like myself, it's a real treat to play at that course and a great fundraiser. Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, is the Milbrae's Juneteenth Celebration. So, we definitely are looking forward. There's an item on the agenda tonight for a parade route that's on consent. The City of Milbrae is hosting its second annual Juneteenth Celebration. It will begin with a celebratory flag raising ceremony here at Civic Center Plaza. That's between the David J. Chacuti Room and the library. The parade will follow at 10:00 AM, and then there will be a festival with a lot of entertainment at Central Park. So, during the event, the community and visitors will experience a wide variety of information, as I mentioned, entertainment, carnival games, rides, interactive instructional activities, and vendors from across the Bay Area. So, we're excited to, again, host this event, and I think it's just going to, you know, continue to improve and get bigger and bigger every year. So, Mayor, that's a quick briefing on what's happening in the City of Milbrae.
Thank you so very much. We've got a busy month coming up, so it's always wonderful. Next up, we have the approval... Next up, we have the approval of minutes. And it's, we have the regular meeting on February 27, 2024, and then also special meeting minutes in March 12, 2024. City Clerk, you have something?
Yes, Mayor. On the special meeting minutes of March 12, there's a minor edit. The meeting actually called to order at 5:34 PM, and I do thank Councilmember Snyder for bringing that to my attention.
Excellent. Thank you so very much for the update. I assume that's already been amended?
I amended it, but.
Thank you.
If the action could have reflected that amendment.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Move approval with the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
The meeting minutes of February 27, 2024, and special meeting minutes of March 12, passed by a vote of five to zero with amendment to the March 12 special meeting minutes. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there is one more thing that I, I forgot. So, I would like to call up Mr. Sam Batista again. We have a new employee that started on Monday. It's our city engineer, manager of our capital improvement program. It's a brand-new position that the city council authorized, desperately needed. So, would like to introduce this very special engineer and great addition to our team, to the city council and to the community. So, I'll hand it over to Mr. Sam Batista for that introduction.
Director.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am very pleased to announce the, the hire of Ahmad Hayah as our new city engineer and capital improvements project manager. So, calling up Ahmad. So, just a little bit about Mr. Hayah. He has 24 years of experience on very diverse public works projects and has worked for municipal agencies. He, he hailed, he hails from Redwood City. So, he's been there for nine years. And prior to that, he worked at Mountain House, where he established that brand-new community, which is just outside of Tracy. So, he started his career on Caltrans transportation projects, which included working on the Bay Bridge. And he is a graduate of UC Berkeley and is a licensed engineer here in the state of California. So, while not working, he enjoys hiking in the Bay Area, skiing in the Sierras, and traveling the world to find the best beaches. So, with that, would you like to say anything, Ahmad?
All right.
Thank you. This is only my second day, but I'm really grateful and I'm glad to be here and join the city of Millbrae.
Thank you so much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Just in time for our National Public Works Week. That's excellent. Okay, anything else? City Clerk, city manager? Should we call item number four? Okay, so, without further ado, we have the oral report from city committee and commission chair. Tonight, we have the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 Economic Vitality Advisory Committee work plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I want to introduce Margaret Ng, the chair of our Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, who will be giving the presentation this evening.
You so much, Director.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Director Morkinson, for the warm introduction. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Margaret Ng. I am the chairperson of Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, AKA EVAC. I'm here tonight to present our 24-25 work plan. Here's a snapshot of our current members in the EVAC meeting member. There are two vacancies. For those of you who are in the audience and who's interested in serving in our committee, please come, submit your application or talk to me. We are, we are a fun committee and we welcome all the talents. Next slide, please. All right. Here, here are a list of our accomplishments in 23-24. We participated in the Heartland Program, and we made recommendations to the planning commission and city councils. We also participated in the parking management plan and with the presentation. And we also provide recommendations and feedback before it's going to the council. Third, we support new business by coordinating and participating in grand opening event. Last, but last least, we review and provide feedbacks on new banners of City of Millbrae. And here are our work plans. We have four tasks on our work plan. Task number one is that we are the advisory body to the city council, based as defined by Resolution 16 to 40. We keep a list of issues affecting the economic vitality of our city. We further serve as the advisory body to address the economic development of downtown, including physical enhancements. At this point, there's no cause associated with such tasks. Task number two is to support the development of the Business Improvement District or the Community Benefit District, AKA BID or CBD. We assist the city in promoting the BID and CBD. Secondly, we participate the BID, CBD as a steering committee. Thirdly, we advise on empty store fund study after the BIDs and CBD is established. This includes built database inventory of all our merchants, add as a liaison with brokerage community and owners to help facilitate communication. We work with the city in support of landlords in improving building storefronts. Then we explore the possibility of relocating our farmers market to reduce impact on local business and traffic. At this point, there's no cause associated with such tasks. Our third task is to develop a formal welcome process for our new business, which includes create criteria for recognition of new business that is equitable for all business. Secondly, we maintain the large of a complete and current contact list of all Millbrae business. Third, with the staff on outstanding business, we coordinate with staff on outstanding business license, permit, or code enforcement issues. At this point, there's no cause associated with such tasks. The fourth task is develop a plan to promote our city. We wanted to promote and participate in current and future city sponsor events. We wanted to establish a program to market Millbrae to travelers. We will help manage relationship with business by conducting outreach events. At this point, we are asking that $1,000 to be allocated from the existing community development department budget to fund such tasks. Councils, do you have any questions?
Open up for council questions.
Go ahead, councilmember.
Thank you. Great presentation, and thank you for everything that you do and your team does. This might be a question for city manager. The Daily Journal Public notices Burlingame has been advertising Streetscape Improvement Program. Would a Streetscape Improvement Program be part of the BID?
It did. So, the Streetscape Improvement Program for the geographic area of the BID, yes.
Okay.
Outside of that, El Camino Real, some of these working on today, it may or may not. It depends on how the geographic area is formed.
And when do we think we might see that come to us?
Hopefully, we will get that started again in midsummer, late summer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, councilmember Pappin.
No question, but I'd like to thank all the committee members for all their hard work and effort and a great deal of business outreach, which has been part of the process here in gathering information to try to coordinate the downtown businesses, to find out what their needs are and how we can make the downtown a more business-friendly district. So, I really want to thank everybody because I know they've had really good turnout and a lot of active participation. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
For your support, councilmember Pappin?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cahalan.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the work that the committee is doing. I'm excited about this work plan and the work you're all doing. I know with the BID, we're still kind of assessing that, how far out that will go in the city. And I've had the opportunity to speak with some of our El Camino businesses lately, and I hope we can include them in, in the discussion process. Because I think they hear a lot of folks talk mostly about downtown and feel a little bit left out. So, it'd be good to include them and, and hear their concerns and their needs and how we can support them as well. And then I'm excited about task number three, because, you know, there's so many different new businesses opening and depending on the relationships had with them, I think, you know, here and there, many of us miss those openings and those opportunities to welcome them as part of the city. So, I'm looking forward to a more formal process so that we can all be included and, and truly welcome our new business owners. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember, and thank you for the suggestion. Definitely, all merchants are part of the group that will be reaching out, so definitely.
Excellent.
Council?
Anything else?
Yeah. Just want to say again, I'm echoing everyone's comments. Thank you so much for, for chairing the committee and all of the work done by the committee. A great deal of the, the work being done, it contributes directly to the success of our, our businesses and our city as a whole. So, we look forward to continue to hear the good things that you're doing to benefit our city and our, our downtown businesses and, and working in collaboration with us, the city and council. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, okay, before anybody make a motion, I just want to say one last thing. It, it's exciting to see our downtown's getting better every day, more vibrant every day. And we have had increases and broadened up our tax basis and increasing our DOT, as well as our sales tax revenue. And much of that work goes in through the group of Economic Vitality and also with the leadership of city manager's office and continue to revitalize Millbrae and increase our economic base and post pandemic. So, much of the good work has been proven to be quite effective. And I'm very thankful for all of your involvement and all your hard work and dedication to that effort. So, with that said, thank you so very much for all you do. Councilwoman.
And I forgot to say, I love the new banners. I love all the colors, the differences. I forgot to bring that up. So, good work on that. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee's work plan for 2024-2025.
We got a motion on the table.
Second.
We got councilmember Pappin on the second. Could you please have a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Item number four, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you so very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is public communication, and this portion of the agenda is reserved for those who wish to comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, a speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the city and the city council. And we will have three minutes per speaker. We have six speaker slips here, and then we're taking hands at the moment online. The speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council member nor the public. We will first begin with in-person speakers and then followed by speakers online. So, tonight, we begin with Mr. Ken Smith, followed by Maha Y.
Thank you for this time. I appreciate it, council. I'm gonna bring up public safety today. That's my topic. And so, as I was talking to my neighbors and friends about the Penta issue and the population that's going to, could be in there, they had some concerns about 911 calls. And so, I did a public record request for projects, the home key projects, that were kind of near to the same figuration of, and they were the Esperanza in Redwood City, the Coast Side in Half Moon Bay, the Milpitas Hills apartment in Milpitas, the Surest Day in San Jose, and the Shores Landing. When I got the data back from the public record request, I was shocked. My jaw actually hit the ground. So, for Esperanza, they were getting, before it turned into a home key project, they were getting five, 10. When it turned into a home key project, 285 calls in 2020. That's concerning. Coast Side, I think that, that hotel was a bit of a party hotel. So, they, they were 89 or so calls before the pandemic, and then it kind of dropped down. But, once it became a home key project, it came, it was up to about 222 calls. Significant. Milpitas, this is the shocker. They were getting about 156 calls, 911 calls, before the pandemic. In 2023, listen to this, go slow, 923 calls. That's significant. I want that to sink into everybody. Stay sure, stay, sure stay reverse that. So, we had about 23 calls, and that's in San Jose. And they were, they were up to, last year, 125 calls. Shores Landing in Redwood City, 10 calls before the pandemic, 440 calls, 440 calls, 911. I've talked to a lot of our neighbors, our residents, and they had a lot of concerns. And you know what their concern was? I'm senior, I'm elderly, and what happens if this one address is getting all the 911 calls, and I'm having a heart attack, or I'm having a stroke and I can't get the TPN in 90 minutes? So, I'm permanently damaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ken Smith. Maha Y, followed by Jimmy Jamal Shamaya.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, vice mayor. I am from District One. I'm a very longtime Millbrae resident. And on April 9, this council made a decision to pass the buck to the community instead of providing the leadership and guidance expected of elected officials. This decision was ambiguous, confusing, and lacked clear direction regarding timelines, overarching supervision, and criteria for member selection. And as predicted, nothing has been done, and thousands more lives have been killed since. It is unacceptable, and our community is in pain, waiting for you to do the right thing and adopt a ceasefire resolution. It is crucial for our leaders to address our community concerns, to take a stand, and not shift responsibility to its constituents. We cannot wait any longer. Thousands of more people have died, over 40,000 have died. And we see it day in and day out on social media. You're not gonna see it on mainstream media. But our, when you think it doesn't get worse, it does. And I just want you to hear the things that we hear, day in and day out. This is just a glimpse. This is a child that's been burned from bombs. Here's another girl, child. I don't sleep at night. Our community is in pain, waiting and waiting for this to stop. And once again, we ask you to please pass a humanitarian resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, unrestricted humanitarian aid to reach suffering communities, relea- release of hostages from all sides. It's actually frustrating and pretty despicable that we have to plead for months for you to stand for humanity. I mean, really, who the heck isn't for peace? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jimmy Shamaya, followed by Karen Lobo.
Over a month ago, our community appeared before this council to request a passage of a ceasefire resolution. Despite hearing from dozens of Millbury residents who spoke in favor of such a resolution, the council chose to ignore their pleas. Instead, the council abdicated its responsibility, shifting the burden onto the community by mandating a voluntary dialogue between pro-peace, pro-ceasefire advocates and a small faction that supports ongoing conflict and war. The council's stance was contingent on the outcome of this dialogue, which was doomed from the start, as the pro-war groups simply refused to participate, thereby blocking any progress. Council members, our community representatives have diligently followed the directions you outlined over a month ago, yet there have been no results. I must reiterate that our community is in constant agony. Many of us are left in a state of uncertainty, not knowing if our relatives and loved ones are dead or alive, whether they are hungry or thirsty, or if their children are injured or worse. The ongoing genocide means it's only a matter of time before our loved ones are fatally affected. Supporting a ceasefire means supporting the cessation of death and suffering. Our relatives in Gaza are human beings. The children there are as valuable as any other children. For over the past 225 days, more than 40,000 Palestinians have been murdered, including 17,000 children. Reflect on this number, council members. Over 17,000 children have been killed so far. Some of them may be our relatives. There are no way for us to know. This situation has caused immense distress, anxiety, and pain in our community. Many are unable to sleep, work, and our children face bullying in schools because of their identity. Will you protect your constituents? Or will you listen to those who push for continuation of death and killing, even though most of them do not reside in Millbury? Will you protect us, your constituents, regardless of your political ambitions? We demand that you stand with your constituents by passing a ceasefire resolution. This resolution is not a piece of paper, as some people claim. It will provide much-needed solace to our community and reassure them that they are heard, cared for, and protected in this beautiful city we call home.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Karen Lobos, followed by Mr. Ad Musa.
Council members, today I address the looming public safety crisis facing Millbury. If San Mateo County proceeds with the purchase of La Quinta Hotel, recent revelations have shed light on concerning trend. Cities that have opened Home Key properties for the unhoused have experienced dramatic spikes in 911 calls. In Redwood City, Casa Esperanza, a 424% increase. Shores Landing at Redwood City, 712% spike in calls. Hillview Apartments in Milpitas, 419% surge. And the Sure Stay in San Jose, 1,548% spike in calls. These figures demand urgent attention. We must assess the current cost per 911 call and carefully evaluate how this potential surge in emergency calls will impact our contract with CCFS and strain our budget. Additionally, we need to determine the number of additional sheriffs and fire department personnel required in Millbury and devise a sustainable funding plan to accommodate this need. Crucially, we cannot overlook the implications of our senior residents on fixed incomes. Are they expected to bear the burden of these escalating costs? Will they receive timely response in emergencies? I urge you to scrutinize the projected figures concerning Home Key and learn from the experiences of other cities that have implemented similar initiatives. Conducting thorough due diligence is imperative in safeguarding the well-being and security of our community. Millbury got a raw deal from the county. In my opinion, the lawsuit was absolutely necessary, and Millbury residents deserve an update. There's a lot of misinformation floating around by outside housing activists. Please put the facts out there to squelch the misinformation campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobos, Mr. Ad Musa, followed by Mr. Ron Raquel.
Thank you, mayor, council, staff. Again, I'm here to speak about a ceasefire resolution. I've been coming here for almost six months now. Every meeting, asking for a resolution to happen. You guys passed the buck on us a little while ago. Wanted us to try to meet with the other groups. I tried. We met numerous times, and basically, nothing has really happened. We're still trying, and they just, they don't want to do anything. We have quite a few people, Palestinians, people from Gaza, and people that truly support our cause, that are living here in Millbury. And there's only a few people, outsiders, that are coming here and screaming foul, screaming anti-Semitic things. There is no, nothing going on here in Millbury. I don't believe so. I don't think there's been a call for anything like that. And we are not these kind of people. Right now in Gaza, Israel has gone into Rafa. They closed the border at Rafa, so nothing's coming in. No humanitarian aid at all. humanitarian aid that's coming from Jordan, trying to come across. Israeli settlers stopped the trucks and started breaking down everything on the truck. We need to do something about that. With your support, we can do that. We have many cities in the Bay Area that are doing that now. We have, what was it, South San Francisco that just passed it. So there's really no reason to go out there and say, it's not part of our plan. It's not something that the city needs to do. It is something the city needs to do. This is something that everybody in the city is, not everybody. I, a constituent of yours, they, constituents of yours, are having a hard time sleeping at nights, thinking about this, seeing this. The sounds of those children that Maha was talking about, that you heard. Every single day, that stuff's happening. We hear it. We feel it. We'd like you to do something about it. Support this resolution. Put it up on the agenda. Support it. Let's pass it. And my God, there won't be any kind of trouble behind it. There isn't any. There shouldn't be any. There won't be any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Ron Raquel.
Good evening, City Council and public. My same spiel about Millbury and Magnolia Avenue, maybe I can phrase this a different way. I don't know if you've tried to drive there in the middle of the morning, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning during commute hours. No control turn signal, pedestrians crossing, bikes crossing, people in a rush to get telecommute or 211. You have the light, the sun hitting you in the eye, blinding you in the middle of the intersection. You will be blinded and not see pedestrians crossing or bikes crossing. You're advocating for more bike-friendly intersection there, with the green crossing there. It's going to happen one day where someone's going to die. I don't know what else to say. I pleaded with you for five and a half years. The only person that reached out to me was Ms. Cahalan. I've emailed the whole city council, deaf ears. What is it going to take? Someone is going to die at that intersection. I know there is time studies. How come east-west has a controlled signal? If you did a time study now, I bet there is just as much traffic going north-south as east-west. Whoever designed that intersection was an incompetent fool. What is it going to take? Death? Thoughts and prayers? Hollow words? I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. That's all of the speaker slip I have in chamber. City Clerk, would you please help facilitate the online speakers?
All right. So the first speaker online is Santana. And Santana, if you could please accept the unmute and also state your full name, please.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Santana Fanvee Wad. I live in District Two, and I just want to thank you for Public Works Department. I want to again extend my gratitude to them. And the See Click Fix on the Millbury Works app, it works just fine. They are very responsive. And I also appreciate the sidewalk scan in the neighborhood for the feedback on safety from the community. So I'd like to also see that downtown for the, hopefully, when we do the downtown improvement plan. So I just want to appreciate what they do, and I appreciate the feedback that the neighborhood can provide. And I also had a question about chambers of commerce. I'm not quite sure if it's part of the jurisdictions of the city of Millbury, but I've, since I heard the Economic Advisory Committee and what they do for our city, I just wonder if we even need the chambers of commerce, because I don't think they are very responsive to the community or to the businesses. And I see that the Saturday market will be relocated, which I'm very happy about. Their website has not been updated since 2018. And I know like a few months ago, the city approved some of the events that's happening. And I did not see chambers of commerce as far as the Labor Day that we have on an annual basis. They just have been very absent in the community, and I would just like them to be more involved and if we even need them. The third thing I'd like to talk about is the dog park. I appreciate the 2024, 2025 park improvement. I know in the last meeting, you mentioned about having an off-leash option in every neighborhood. If we do do that, I would like to start off with a trial program with limited hours. But I'm more for towards the establishing a park. If we have that land between Green Hills Park and the church, I am very much in favor of having the park and the planning commission to start doing a conceptual design. And I'd like just to end this with something that I think a lot of the residents may have the same sentiments about our dogs. This is by Margaret Wise Brown from the Friendly Book. Okay, this is about dogs. I like dogs. Big dogs, little dogs, fat dogs, doggy dogs, old dogs, puppy dogs. I like dogs. A dog that is barking over the hill, a dog that is running very still, a dog that's running wherever he will. I like dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Santana. Okay, next speaker is Helen Fu. Please accept the unmute, please.
Hi, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you so much, council member. I appreciate this time to speak. So I would like to use this time to address three points about the recall with the intention of reducing the misconceptions around it. So misconception one, the recall is going to cost the city lots of money. So if we divided up the cost, it comes out to roughly $7 per person. There were two council members that voted in favor of converting La Quinta, which Millbury would stand to lose $770,000 in tax revenue for every year after the conversion. Even in the first year alone, the amount of tax revenue lost would easily dwarf the amount required for the recall. So after years two to 10 of no La Quinta tax revenue, that would be very insignificant. So misconception two, the recall was intended for council members breaking the law. I'm going to disagree with this opinion. The law fully supports this recall. We need a recall option to hold the council members accountable for decisions, especially ones that go against the majority of the people they represent. So misconception three, the people behind the recall are heartless. It is not heartless to take care of Millbury first. The county has attempted to override the city on La Quinta, giving Millbury no voice. We could resort to name-calling also and call this heartless. Instead, there was a counter-proposal to not use La Quinta, but other property closer to bar that was not accepted. The group behind converting La Quinta was in favor of a no-bid acquisition of the property to the tune of $30 million that was well above market rate. Lastly, the people behind this are not Millbury residents. This doesn't sound like putting Millbury first. So I would like to close and say it's critical that the residents of Millbury understand the long-lasting impact we will experience if we do not participate in this recall. It is absolutely important to put Millbury first. So thank you.
All right, next speaker is Stella L. If you could state your last name for the record as well. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Stella Lau. Good evening, city councils. It appears that Millbury's budget is already constrained. As evidenced by the proposed annual fire assessment fee, the addition of over 99 residents at La Quinta will further string our city's budget. I am very concerned about what this means for us as residents. What happens if a resident here in Millbury, that could be a family member, a friend, or neighbor, suffer a medical emergency like a heart attack? And our emergency services are tied up responding to situation at La Quinta. Will it take even longer for help to arrive when every second counts? Also, I'm curious about the financial impact. How much will the annual fire assessment fee go up in the future because of La Quinta? And will we, the current residents, have to pay even more to cover it? And let's not forget about emergency response time. Once La Quinta is up and running, how long will it take for help to get to us? These are important questions that need answers. We all want to feel safe and supported in our community. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Jimmy Faraday.
Shalom. Good evening, everyone here in Millbury. I would like to actually take the position of anti-ceasefire for the Israel and Palestine conflict, simply because they have been attacking us since we got there in 1947. The land in Israel, I am a dual citizen, American first. And I got my Israeli citizenship afterwards, because my parents had to move here from Israel during the Six-Day War. And I, anyone who hasn't actually been in Israel doesn't understand the atrocities being committed against the Jewish people by these Goyim. It's absolutely horrible. I was there last year before all of this, and there were children. They were throwing rocks at the IDF and at civilians. And this is before escalation in the conflict. But those children right there throwing those rocks, all right? You know, in two years, three years, they're going to be the ones firing the rockets, all right? So I'm not advocating for war. However, what I am advocating for is finishing the job and settling this conflict once and for all. Me and the other members of the local Chabad-Lukavitz center, we're all in agreement. We should be supporting Israel as best we can in eliminating these terrorists in the Middle East. You know, everyone in Palestine is a member of Hamas. It doesn't matter whether they're a fighting-age male between the age of 18 and 35, or whether they're a mother about to give birth at eight months pregnant, or they're a three-year-old child. They're all going to grow up to be terrorists, all right? Now they're building tunnels underneath the hospitals to go and fire these rockets that they built from the water lines. And then they cry for international aid. Oh, we don't have any water. We don't- We don't have any water. Well, you shouldn't have dug up your water lines to build these rockets. I don't understand how the international community doesn't understand that. On top of that, they're culturally appropriating my people's history of building tunnels to stay safe. We've been doing this since Egypt in 5,000 BCE. And now they're going ahead and building tunnels under safe spaces to try and mimic us in order to, you know, commit some sort of anti-Semitic trope? I mean, if we let this keep going on, they're going to keep killing Jew after Jew after Jew after Jew. And you really want to be responsible for that? We say ceasefire today, you know what that means? That means more dead Jews tomorrow. We don't need no ceasefire. In fact, the United States should be giving more money to Israel, more weapons to Israel to take care of these filthy desert rats who are killing women.
Yeah. We need to stop. City Clerk, please stop the speaker. I expect, hold on, hold on. I expect the public speakers to be civil. And so we cannot have racist comments such as this. So we need to stop this particular speaker. So, City Clerk.
Next speaker is Judd Smith. If you could please accept the mute.
Hello. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, okay. I wanted to advocate for the Palestinians during this conflict. I don't know what the other speaker was talking about. But the Israeli-Palestinian conflict is one of the world's major sources of instability. Americans are directly connected to this conflict as we pay $10 million a day on average to Israel. And increasingly, we are imperiled by the devastation of this war. So there are many statistics that I can read. If you would like the source, it's ifamericansnew.org. So daily USAID to Israel is an enormous amount, okay? According from 2022, $13 million a day. But the military aid to Palestine is $0.73 million a day. And this is ridiculous. If we ever think to have a peaceful world and if we want people to be treated equal, this is not what our government should be doing. Israeli and Palestinian children killed to present. Let me show you. 143 Israeli children have been killed by Palestinians and 2,434 Palestinians have been killed. These are children. They are shooting children here at a rate that is so remarkable. When you look at the graph, the Israelis killed looks close to zero. The Palestinians killed is over 2,000. Why are we spending money for this? And then on top of that, I would like to say that they are actually saying that we should take in the refugees here? When was Israel founded? 1947, after World War II. And a lot of this information that is saying that it's okay for them to do that comes from the Anti-Defamation League. And I will remind you that the Anti-Defamation League was established in 1913 to protect a Jewish child murdering pedophile named Leo Frank, who murdered poor little 13-year-old Mary Fagan, an Irish worker at his pencil factory, and tried to blame it on a black man, Jim Conley. But the courts and the people of that city in Georgia found that he was the liar, he was the murderer, and they dealt with him accordingly. So what?
City Clerk. Thank you for the comment. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jess Hudson. Jess, please accept the mute.
Good evening. The letter written and recommended by council members Fong, Pappan, and Schneider is baffling. It alleges the county did not address a series of financial issues the city imagines may potentially be experienced if a private business.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. This discussion is on the agenda.
Which item?
Item number.
Other home key, other home key-related questions have been taken at this time.
Just hold on. Ms. Hudson, just hold on one second as we determine. We'll get back to you. Just hang on one second.
So, yeah, the item of the financial impact of La Quinta is item number 11 on the agenda.
Ms. Hudson.
She doesn't focus on that. She's welcome to come back under the law, under item 11, or address the council on some generic issue.
Okay, all right. So let me say this. Ms. Hudson, if your intent is to discuss the financial impact of the La Quinta conversion, it is on item number 11. You're welcome to address the council on other items, on other issues. But if your discussion surrounded around La Quinta in financial, I would encourage you to come back when we discuss item 11. Would you like to come back or would you like to continue?
I'll take both. I will make a comment on the recall now and I will save item 11 for later. Recalling two competent leaders because you don't like one vote is irresponsible, expensive, and wrong.
Continue, go ahead. Ms. Hudson?
I'll come back for item 11.
You're done. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Albert Yam.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for having us. In troubled times like this, what bothers me the most is the divisiveness in our community. I think if we were in a united front, then everything will be better. If President Biden supports the foreign policy as it is, I think local government should not get involved. If the state of California doesn't say anything, if the federal government doesn't say anything like that, then let's stay out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yam. City Clerk.
The next speaker is Sammy Reeds.
Sammy?
Sammy, you are unmuted, so you could go ahead and start speaking.
Go ahead. Hello, I'm Sammy.
Go ahead.
Perfect. I just have a short little spiel written up and it's less divisive than some of the other stuff that we've heard of. So I'm going to go ahead and continue if that's all right with you, council.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it. God bless. First off, I'll start with that I do not flatter myself into believing that my remarks will influence public opinion in the neutral, much less the hostile states. That is not my goal nor my intention. As a representative of the European people and the European diaspora, I do claim the right to call a danger if it threatens not only our own city but the entirety of Western civilization. We Europeans have the duty to sound the alarm against international Jewry's attempt to plunge the European people into chaos and to warn about Bolshevism and the terroristic military power whose danger cannot be overestimated. The danger is immediate. The paralysis of the Western European democracies before their deadliest threat is frightened. International Jewry is doing all it can to encourage such paralysis. During our struggle for power, Jewish newspapers tried to conceal the danger until national socialism awakened the people. It is just the same today in other nations. And Jewry once again reveals itself as the incarnation of evil, as the plastic demon of decay in the bearer of.
Hold on, stop. Go ahead, stop.
Yeah, I mean, we have to be very careful on freedom of speech.
We also have the First Amendment right to free speech. So can I have my time back where you cut me off? We have the Brown Act in California. Thank you very much.
Stop the speaker. Legal?
How much time does he have?
It's got about a minute and five seconds, but there's on a contact.
I'll cite U.S. Supreme Court, I believe it's 13 under the 1983.
Your time is gone.
Jewry as a direct threat to every nation. And we do not care what other people do about the danger. What we do to defend ourselves is our own business. However, and we will not tolerate the objections from others, Jewry is a contagious infection. Enemy nations may raise hypocritical protest against their measures against Jewry and cry crocodile tears. But there's no such thing as hate speech. The First Amendment does not recognize.
Stop the speaker.
You fucking Jews.
See, just cut it off.
Stop the speaker. Order. Stop the speaker.
Do we have any more?
I have to reiterate. I have to reiterate that I expect every speaker to be civil and not to incite any hateful comment. This, it's very. Ladies and gentlemen here in this chamber, I mean, it's very difficult to walk that fine line. I understand that. I understand how you all felt. This is unacceptable and I understand that. So we're just trying to walk the fine line here as far as what's legal and what we can and cannot. Yes, I understand that. So it's a very fine line we're trying to walk. I just wish everybody to have a little patience with us. And I understand how painful it is to have to go through with all this. Anyhow, if there is any more uncivil speech, that I will stop the clock and I will stop the mic. I want to make sure everybody understands that. Next speaker online, one last one, Caleb Brewster.
Caleb Brewster, please accept the mute. Caleb, please accept the mute and you could start.
Yes, my name is Caleb Brewster. I'm coming through.
Go ahead.
Yes. Yes. I wanted to talk about Marxism here that's destroying our culture. We are a people that we have designated laws and we have laws that are in place that people have over held with the Supreme Court for centuries. And I am just sickened by the fact that we just cannot come to a consensus on this. It, I don't know. I was born in 1953. And what I've seen so far from what has been happening, it really makes me want to cry. It really does. There's people over here, they are mutilating animals. And one big thing that I do is I go and I rescue dogs. And these people are mutilating animals. And they will go and take a bunch of chickens and they will swing them around and they will cut their throats and they will leave them in the streets. And I want PETA to be involved. And if our council can pass a resolution to involve PETA in this so that we can get these people held to account, this is not proper. And they're leaving them there. And I also wanted to say that this Marxism is at the core of anti-whitism. And it is not okay to be racist. But we also need to consider that these people are being anti-white. And it is not okay to be anti-anything in our society. And there was a battle in the country of Europe that was fought to dictate. And that is the Europa, the Last Battle. And if you go to watcheuropa.net, you will see this. And I also wanted to say that these people, they have subverted everything in our land. If you go and you really look at the statistics, there's no way you could ignore it. You just cannot ignore the truth. Because they have this practice where they say that it's a religious practice and they go and they molest children and they cut them up. And these people are coming from this land of Palestine and Tel Aviv.
Stop.
Just cut it.
Stop. 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 It took them a while to get there, but they were getting skillful here. Next speaker.
Are you watching? This sounded like a repeat.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody, hold on. These hands keeps coming in. That's why, you know, when I honor the first speaker, three minutes, that's why it has to be fair. So, but I think in the future, in the future, we need to set a timeline at which hands raised and speaker's lips coming in so that it doesn't perpetuate itself.
Okay, at this point in time, just you can.
So we have some speakers that has already spoken, so they're not going to be allowed to speak again.
Right.
Mar Hudson has not. I want to make sure that.
No, Jess Hudson.
Jess Hudson has spoken, not Mar Hudson. I want to make sure that person gets to speak.
Through the chair. Please make a motion to close off speaker after Mar Hudson.
I got one, I got one slip that got handed in, so I will make sure that that gets done. All right, so let me, hold on, everybody, hold on. I got Bonnie Patton. I want to make sure to honor that speaker's lip and also Mar Hudson. And that will be the end of public comment tonight.
I was also going to suggest, it's 8:25 almost and you haven't even gotten to business.
I understand that.
I would suggest you limit to one minute at this point. No?
But the previous speaker has had three minutes. So, so we need, we need some rules here. Legal? We need some rules here in the future meeting where all hands and speakers need to be turned in by a certain timeline so that we can tally because all these hand raised keeps coming in. And that's the challenge. We got another Rudy Hess that has raised his hand, but we already said we're going to cut it off. So, so Mar Hudson is the last online speaker tonight.
All right. Mar Hudson, please go ahead and accept the mute.
Millbrae's commitment to human displacement anywhere is disfit goal. Whether it be here in Millbrae with the senseless and illogical blocking of the La Quinta Home Key Project, putting our unhoused neighbors in danger, or with our refusal to pass a ceasefire resolution condemning the genocide in Gaza, allowing the horrific torture and slaughter of Palestinian people and land. 40,000 people were dead as of December before the infrastructure to count collapsed. I have no doubt that we are now well past the 100,000s and that is horrifying. I watch in absolute horror as heartless municipal leadership allows vulnerable children, families, and the elderly to be displaced both in our neighborhood and against our human family in Palestine. With seemingly no shame, all of our neighbors deserve a home and it is the responsibility of us all to look after the local and the global community.
We're done? Okay. That's all for the online speaker tonight. And then we have Bonnie Patton and then that will be the end of our public comment tonight. Ms. Patton?
Good evening, council members and mayor. It's in regards to La Quinta. I also attended the county courthouse hearing, the case regarding La Quinta. The action does need to go to vote for a city of Millbrae. Also, I had a little saying that is very hurtful, but it also doesn't just pertain to La Quinta. But in regards to La Quinta, it was printed back a few months back, racist remarks about Millbrae residents. I would like to address the name-calling of Millbrae needs to stop immediately. As told when we were children, sticks and stones will break our bones. And yes, name-calling hurts us all. Please stop. Thank you, council members. We can all work out this together.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Patton. Okay, so that wraps up our public comment tonight. Moving on to consent calendar, item number five. Wait the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the Millbrae zoning map to extend the commercial preference area overlay. Number six, adopt a resolution declaring three existing vehicle surplus and approving the purchase of five new vehicles. Item seven, adoption of a resolution for city hall parking lot and temporary street closure for the Juneteenth parade on Saturday, June 15, 2024. June fifteen, two thousand twenty-four. Does anybody want to pull any item from consent? Go ahead, council member.
Ash Schneider. No, mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve with one caveat. I live just a few houses down from one of the road closures in item seven. It's not a conflict, but I just wanted it on the record that I, it is okay for me to vote for that.
Okay, legal? Okay, thank you.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen. Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Consent, the consent calendar passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearing, item number eight, consider a minor general plan and land use text amendment to add clarifying language, allowing life sciences laboratory technology, biotechnology, or research and development for properties with a general commercial land use designation and located east of Highway one oh one and west of Old Bay Shore Highway. Life sciences, laboratory, biotechnology, or research and development uses would allow biosafety level one as a permanent use and biosafety level two as a conditionally permitted use. Director.
Good evening, uh, mayor, mayor and members of the council. I'm back again. I presented this item previously on March twenty-six. Um, and we are returning this item for a final consideration before council. Um, this is a minor general plan land use text amendment to add clarifying language, uh, allowing life sciences, laboratory, and, I'm sorry, I didn't think my keyboard was ready. Uh, and, um, other similar uses located east of Highway one oh one, west of Old Bay Shore Highway. Uh, life sciences, laboratory, biotechnology, and research and development would allow biosafety level one in this amendment as a permitted use and biosafety level two as a conditionally permitted use. I guess I can't control the slides. Go ahead to the next one. So, um, we started this endeavor with the Millbrae Station area specific plan where we enabled these land uses. Um, we currently have Alexandria and Longfellow under construction. And so what this does is this extends, uh, those land uses to be allowed in the general plan in an area just to the east of these. So you can see the blue area at the bottom of the map. Next slide, please, and we'll blow that up. Uh, and you can see, um, the area where we would be, uh, we're proposing this minor general plan land use amendment. Uh, it's that area in red, uh, it would expand the science laboratory research and biotechnology uses to this area, which are properties currently with a general commercial land use designation that are just outside of the Millbrae Station area specific plan boundary. Next slide. Uh, and again, as I said, uh, this is how it would be re-added into the general plan. Biosafety level one would be a permitted use, biosafety level two would be a conditionally permitted use. Next slide, please. Um, just a little some background. This went to the planning commission on February fifth. Uh, they recommended the council approve the amendment. Um, we went back to council on March twenty-six, and staff had originally proposed biosafety level three. Uh, but the council at that meeting directed staff by a five oh vote to revise the amendment to not allow biosafety level three. The reason we were at council on March twenty-six was because biosafety level three would have required initiation of an override of the airport land use compatibility plan, but because we removed it, we no longer needed to do that. So what was staff did is on April twenty-fifth, we took, we revised our application and we returned to the airport land use committee. And on that date, they found that the amendment was consistent with the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan. Uh, and then their recommendation to, was made to the board of directors of CCAG, who in their capacity as the airport land use commission agreed, and they also found that it was consistent. Next slide, please. Um, and the reason for that, we have, we're, half of the property, or half of the site in this general plan amendment is, uh, located in airport safety zone three, and the other half is not located in airport safety zone. Uh, next slide, please, I'm going to zoom in on this. So on this slide, you can see the area in green is the location of where the general plan amendment is occurring. Um, you can see the different airport safety zones and how they relate. Airport safety zone three is less restrictive than airport safety zone two. Airport safety zone two is where we have Longfellow, ACLS, Millbrae Station. That's a far more restrictive zone because their airplanes are landing right over the top of those properties. Uh, safety zone three is less restrictive, and you can see the eastern half of this amendment area is not in a safety zone. Next slide, please. So biosafety level uses are not, they do not require an over, override. They're land uses to avoid if they are in that safety zone three area. Um, and if they do go into that safety zone three area on the, um, western half of the site, there would be special findings required to be made before approval that there's no feasible alternative. And of course, under the building code, we'd have to provide double the exiting. So there's additional building code requirements so that there's, um, a, double exits on the building. People can leave the building faster if there's an emergency. So, next slide, please. Um, so this, uh, minor amendment is consistent with the general plan. Um, it helps further the general plan's economic development goals. Uh, next slide, please. Um, more specifically, in the general plan, we do have a policy to support new development and our position as a regional office in biotechnology life sciences market, particularly projects near Millbrae Station. And of course, this further, uh, furthers that goal. You can see how we're extending this land use, uh, in an area adjacent to the station area plan. So, um, with that, we recommend that the council adopt a resolution providing this amendment to the general plan. Of course, any land use that comes in, uh, any project that comes in in the future, no matter what the land use, we're going to be doing a fiscal impact analysis, because obviously the fiscal impact of land use is, is first and foremost on our mind regardless of what kind of project comes forward, if one does in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Mokenson. Anyone on the council have any questions for our staff? Let me just make sure, check the hands. Anything from Mr. Vice Mayor? No? Okay, sounds good. Uh, we'll take some public comment, if any. I don't have any speaker slip. Do we have anybody online? On this item?
Not in this item, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council. Do I have any motions?
Happen, move approval. Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, absolutely.
So, motion to close the public hearing? We need to vote, correct? Yeah, that would be a good thing.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Go ahead and roll call it. Public, uh, close the public comment. Public hearing.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Council Cahalan.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, bring it back to the council. Anybody want to entertain a motion?
Move approval.
We got a motion from Councilmember Papen? Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, mayor. Sorry, Councilwoman Papen. I think we're trying to be trained to read the full motion or the record. It helps the city clerk, it helps the public. So Gina, if, or Councilwoman, if you want to try it, I've got it in front of me. We've got it in front of us.
I can read it. Um, the most, the item is consider a minor general plan land use text amended to add clarifying language, allowing life science laboratory technology, biotechnology, or research and development for properties with a general commercial land use designation located east of Highway one oh one, west of Old Bay Shore Highway. Life sciences laboratory, biotechnology, or research and development uses allow, would allow biosafety level one as permitted use and biosafety level two as conditionally permitted use.
That's the motion.
All right, second?
We have a second from Ms. Cahalan, Councilmember Cahalan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
Public hearing item number eight, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Director Mokenson.
Thank you.
Item number nine, continuance of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operations and capital budget study session. Director Maesong.
My apologies, technical difficulty. Okay.
Ready?
Yes, I am.
There we go.
Thank you for your patience. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable, uh, City Council members. Um, today we'll be continuing our budget study session, uh, for, um, operating and for, um, capital. First, let's go ahead and, uh, talk about the, uh, general fund. Then we'll talk a little bit about the departments, uh, the enterprise fund, recreation, um, and the remaining schedule left. So, um, general fund. So, when we last, um, had our study session on April ninth, we were, uh, looking at two different scenarios for, um, revenue. Uh, and scenario one, which we would receive our full revenue, it's at forty-two point four million. Scenario two, um, it actually factors in, uh, possibility of, uh, two different things. The fire assessment is one piece. Uh, that's about one point eight million. And I'll get into, um, that in a little bit more detail, um, uh, later. And also a loss of, uh, VLF. The state's currently looking at, um, um, possibly either taking away or delaying the VLF portion. It's not the entire amount. It's, um, approximately a third of, uh, next year's amount. It's based off of a very complicated formula, um, based off of, uh, basic aid and, and non-basic aid schools. This percentage is actually, uh, across the board for the entire county, and it includes the county for the VLF. So, um, if it's only forty percent that they take away, it would be forty percent from San Mateo County, and then also forty percent from each of the cities inside San Mateo. So it's spread all the way across in an equal amount. Um, so we also have expenditures for, uh, scenario one and for scenario two. So expenditures in scenario one, um, we would be expending out forty-one point, um, three million dollars. That would include the, uh, two hundred thousand that we would, um, have for, um, additional, uh, reserves as well. And in scenario, um, two, we would actually, um, look at a combination of a reduction of, uh, general fund storm caps, uh, storm capital, possible bound out of Station thirty-eight, and the use of fund balance to, uh, make up the difference, because we need to have a balanced budget. So, uh, just as a little history, um, over the years, uh, general funds actually accumulated, um, fund balance. And so the fund balance for this year is twelve point seven million. Um, part of that, we actually lent to the recreation center, about one point two million. Um, and this excludes our, uh, reserves. Our reserves are fifteen percent of the, um, expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four, which is six million dollars right now. And, um, it's anticipated to increase to about six point two for, um, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in the proposal. So here it is, as a graphical representation. You can see that, um, property tax is the main contributor. It is the main contributor for most cities out there. Property tax is, uh, comprised of actually quite a few different, um, pieces. Uh, the one that everybody's really used to is the one percent ad valorem, but there's also other portions of property tax that comes in, like the property tax in view, uh, in lieu of vehicle license fees, that's one piece, excess ERAF, which is the, um, excess educational revenue, revenue augmentation, um, fund as well. Um, what's unique about Millbrae is TOT. Um, twenty-three percent of our, um, revenue comes from, uh, TOT, our transient occupancy tax. We're actually located, uh, very strategically, uh, next to SFO and to, uh, Silicon Valley. So, uh, there is a higher than normal tendency for TOT here. We are, and then to form, to round out the big three is the, uh, sales tax piece. So sales tax is, uh, uh, looking, uh, better at, uh, three point three million, which is about eight percent. And then the rest of the revenues, um, round off the, uh, remaining amount. But the big three tax, um, the big three tax, uh, basically comprised of about seventy, uh, seventy-one percent of our general fund revenue. So graphically, this is, um, what it looks like. So for twenty-four, uh, twenty-five, we're looking at, uh, about forty-two point, uh, four million. And, um, as I had mentioned about the, um, fire assessment in itself, um, if, uh, that were to go through, that is about one point eight million for, um, next year. And then, uh, the VLF portion, the total VLF that we're expecting to receive next year is about three point seven five million. What's actually in question with, uh, the, um, with the state is about one-third of that, about one point two five million, um, roughly. So it's, it's an estimate, and we don't really know what the, um, number of, uh, basic aid or non-basic aid schools will be. That actually gets determined later on. So, just letting you know that, uh, a portion of that is actually what the state, um, has. And right now, in current practice, the state has been, um, paying us back that amount, but it usually takes about fourteen or fifteen months, um, afterwards. So we would anticipate to receive the, um, portion from the previous fiscal year in around August in that, um, time period. Um, looking out into the, um, future years, um, you'll see that, um, what's, um, changing here is that, uh, the licenses and permits, um, it's going to start to, um, um, meter down a little bit, um, in the future years, as we still have quite a bit of development, but that's, um, going to kind of meter down, uh, a little bit into the future. Everything else seems, uh, pretty straightforward. It's gonna, um, grow at a regular clip. I apologize, the presentation seems to have disappeared.
We still see that on our screen? There we go.
Thank you, city clerk, for the save. Let me go ahead and go back on the, um, expenditures. Here we go. So for the expenditure, uh, distribution, we're looking at about, uh, forty-one point, um, one, uh, million in, in total, plus the extra two hundred thousand for the, uh, uh, increase in reserves. Most of this is made up of, um, public safety, about fifty-five percent. You can see twenty-nine percent is fire, and then twenty-six percent is, um, police. Uh, the rest of it rounds out to be general government, public works, parks, um, as well as, uh, community development and transfers. So, um, you can see that, um, from, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, one thing I'd like to point out, uh, so that you can actually see, um, what's actually happening is, for public safety for fire, it's going up by about one point three, one point, um, four million. You would think that that is a twelve point six six percent, um, increase. A portion of that, about seven hundred thousand dollars, is actually, um, part of the UAL or unfunded, um, actuarial, um, liability. What this is, is for the, um, old pensions in the past, um, for, uh, fire before, when we actually had a, uh, fire department instead of a CCFD. And part of CCFD or Central County Fire Department, which services us, Berlin Game, and Hillsborough, their, um, increase actually as a portion of the UAL as well, because they also, um, go with, um, CALPERS. And the, um, pensions ebb and flow, they go up and down, uh, depending on, uh, how the, uh, market is, because the pensions are actually, um, they look at what the market earning rates are. Like, two years ago, uh, you were looking at a twenty-one percent return, which is great. And the year right after, it decreased to negative six percent. So, there's a lot of volatility, um, in that piece. So, did want to kind of speak to that, just to show you that it's not all CCFD. A lot of it's actually the, uh, UAL or the unfunded actual liability that's there. Um, otherwise, just wanted to mention for like, community development.
Hey Mike, may, may I, just, just for further information for the city council, you know, Mike had mentioned investments, but it's really dependent on the performance of PERS. And, and, um, the PERS performance lags two years, so we're always planning on what, what PERS does today will have that impact, positive or negative, two years from now. And so that's, that's what we plan for. But, but really, it's not just the market because it's, it's PERS overall investment and PERS return on the pensions.
Oh, thank you, city manager. Thanks for, uh, bringing that to clarification. It is, uh, two-year, um, lagging. Um, when it comes to these actuarial evaluations, as, um, our city manager had mentioned before, if you had a negative return, it takes two years for it to actually realize. You know, if the market's doing good like it could be for this year, then you'll have a lagging, uh, determinant two years. So, not next year, but the year afterwards is when you would actually see the difference. As I wanted to, uh, mention before, for community development, you can see what their, um, budget, um, looks like, and it looks like it's decreasing. That's actually, um, directly correlated with, um, how much we receive in revenue for licenses and permits and charges for services as well. Development activity increases, um- the expenditures would increase. And as development activity decreases, the expenditures decrease as well. So that's tied to that. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about the property tax. I think I'd mentioned this as well, but I'd like to point out, just so that people can see, when we're looking at the one percent ad valorem that you have on any piece of property when it's assessed, for every dollar in tax revenue, Millbrae gets a little bit less than sixteen cents. You can also see that for this and how it's split, the county gets about twenty-eight cents for the, for part of the dollar. And then the school districts, if you add them up, it's approximately fifty percent or half of that. And this is just for the general fund portion. But Millbrae doesn't really get that much. And Millbrae provides, it's most of the services that most residents are kind of used to, like police and fire, public works. So as an example of how this property tax share works is for a two-million-dollar home, when you're assessed the one percent, you're assessed twenty thousand dollars every year. Of that twenty thousand dollars, fifty-six hundred bucks goes to the San Mateo County. Then you see that there's school districts that receive a portion of that as well. City of Millbrae actually only gets about thirty-one hundred and fifty-seven dollars out of that twenty thousand dollars. So you can actually see how much of the property tax money actually goes to Millbrae. So the distribution, just wanted to kind of educate the public to just to remind them, this is actually where the money goes for property tax. Sales tax, same thing with sales tax. For sales tax, you can see that our sales tax rate is nine point three seven five. Inside the county, it's generally nine point three seven five or nine point eight seven five. It's roughly half and half. Some cities have a higher sales tax rate. We, we currently have nine point three seven five percent. Of that, nine point three seven five percent, Millbrae gets one percent of that. County gets one percent. The state takes six percent of the sales tax, and the remaining one point three seven five percent is actually for transit. So on the very next page, this is the sales tax distribution. As I mentioned before, you can see that the total San Mateo Transportation Group, which includes CalTrains, Measure RRR, and the other transit districts, is one point three seven five percent. County gets one percent. Millbrae gets one percent. And the, the rest, which adds up to six percent, goes to the state. We didn't have a graph for transient occupancy tax because all of the transient occupancy tax goes to the city. It's not split with the state or the county. With property tax and sales tax, that ends up usually getting split between a bunch of entities. So just to mention what our capital and transfers out and transfers in are, we have approximately three-quarters of a million dollars for street facilities and parks budgeted in for twenty-four, twenty-five. We're going to receive in about two point six million for cost allocation. This is to provide some services for the other funds because that's what services are provided by general government. And then transferred out, total about two point six, two point seven million dollars. And that's kind of split between recreation, field, and also storm drain. So new budget proposals. So these are the budget proposals that we're bringing forward. Total of six FTEs, none of them to the general fund. All of these are for council goal, sustainable city infrastructure investment. They're all in public works. They're divided between water and sewer. And these are to basically help keep up with the maintenance. That's, these are the positions that would be necessary in order to keep up with the maintenance that we have. As Millbrae continues to grow, this is what would be necessary. Departments. So general government is composed of city council, attorney's office, manager's office, city clerk's office, finance and administration. It's a total of fifteen FTEs. Our attorney's office is currently contracted out. We're not recommending any new positions right now. Community development, it's comprised of planning, building, and code enforcement, total of eight FTEs. As I mentioned before, the expenditures are correlated directly to increased development. So increased expenditures are offset by revenue. And we're currently contracting out building and permit. Recreation. This is comprised of a bunch of different divisions, adult youth sports, senior community garden classes, arts, preschool, rentals, special events, and summer camp, for a total of seven point seven five FTEs. The new recreation center is fully operational and has been since June twenty twenty-two. Why this is important is actually, we're starting to get a lot more increased demand for programs and room rentals. So with additional expenditures for staffing and programs, we're actually getting additional revenues as well to help offset that. And then public works. This is comprised of engineering, admin, utilities, and operations in parks, sixty-seven total FTEs. The new maintenance staff additions are necessary to meet the needs of the residents and the businesses and to keep up with our increasing demand of services. So in total, it's an increase from ninety-three point two five to ninety-seven point seven five. And that gets us to a little bit underneath one hundred. Operating budget. So you saw this graph last time at the four-twenty-three council meeting. And this kind of shows you what our fund balances look like, what our revenue for water, sewer, storm, and the other funds look like. The actual operating expenditures and how much capital we're looking to spend. And then there's an estimated year-end fund balance. I think I've mentioned this before, but I'll reiterate this as well. For water and sewer, we have a fifteen percent reserve as well. It's four million in sewer, two point six million in water. That's actually outside of this fund balance. So the reserves aren't actually shown here. We're just maintaining the reserves outside of this, just so that you kind of know. And for streets, that's kind of a conglomerate of a bunch of different funds. The HUDA, our gas tax, Measure A, Measure W, Measure M. A portion of that's half-cent sales tax. A portion of that is actually determined by a combination of factors, number of miles plus population. There's a formula that kind of determines how much you actually receive for those funds. So with recreation, as I mentioned before, we've recovered fairly decently, and the demand has expanded quite a bit over the last two years. What we're basically seeing is that we're expecting to actually be at a higher cost recovery moving forward in twenty-four, twenty-five. Currently, we're projected to be at fifty percent recovery for the rest of this year. And for next year, we're looking to recover at about fifty-five percent. So it's an improvement. And as I mentioned before, for water and sewer, there's a bunch of large and critical capital projects. We brought that forward to you last time at the council study session for capital. And they're programmed into the CIP. These projects take generally a lot longer than one year. It will take, you know, a year, year and a half, two years for quite a few, but some of them span multiple years beyond that as well. The one difference that I would mention is we're also looking at a one-time operating budget expenditure of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's to study and assess the force main from the water pollution control plant to the north-bayside system unit force main. That's the one change at this study session that I'd like to point out. Our schedule. Our next thing on the schedule is the proposed operating budget and CIP adoption in two weeks at the May twenty-eighth session. I should also mention that we also went to the Planning Commission on May sixth as well. So this would be the last item here. Next time, it would be budget adoption. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Director Mike Sung. You have a question earlier? Councilmember Cahillin? Oh, okay. Do you have any comment or questions for our staff?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that thorough presentation. I have a couple of questions. On the first slide that shows the projections for the next couple of years, I don't know if we can go back to that one. It was orange. Revenue. So on this, it looks like our revenue for the next couple of years is fairly steady. I'm curious if, you know, Alexandria is set to be open. Longfellow is coming onboard. Gateway will soon be at full occupancy, both the commercial and the residential. And then probably in the next two years or so, the office building will be full with SAM Trans. Do we see this remaining steady even with all of that coming in? We just remain steady? Or is that not factored into this?
There, there's a bunch of things that are actually factored in. And a lot of times with development, it takes time. Sometimes things will come in directly with a new assessment. Other times, there's also points where like, if you have an office building and somebody asks to reassess it with the county assessor's office, they could actually assess it lower as well. That also gets balanced out. As I mentioned with the other things that are coming in, as they get developed, these items come in little batches, so they continuously move on. We also get supplementals that are kind of one-offs during the, during the fiscal year. So if somebody buys and sells a property in the middle, then some of that comes in as supplemental as well. And also, if you look at it from like SAM Trans, for example, they're actually a government entity. If they actually purchase something, then there's no more property tax on that piece. So there's different variables that we look at. We work closely with the county when we make these projections.
The other question I had was in scenario two and looking at, you know, there is the proposed around the storm drain and maybe closing one of the fire stations. What's the process for deciding what were the, what are the things that would be cut? And kind of what other things may have been considered in that process? If that, if we end up in scenario two?
Yeah, in a situation like that, we would bring back to the city council ways to reduce our expenditures by that two-million-dollar mark if, if this comes to fruition. The VLF, I think, will be paid every year for the last thirty years. The state has always said they're not going to pay the VLF. I think we know that there's an obligation for them to do that. But as our finance director said, it may, you know, be delayed, you know, a year, year and a half or two years. So we'll wait and see and then implement strategies to ensure that we have a balanced budget. And there's a whole lot of different variables within that strategy that we would bring back to the city council.
Councilmember Papin?
Yeah, I would like to note the VLF is a huge fight right now, given the state's current budgetary situation. I think we're seventy billion or something. The debt is huge here. So I think it's, I mean, you're acting optimistically, given past years when the state was very healthy. So I think this eighteen, almost nineteen percent is at risk presently or years deferred. So I, I think that's a serious concern here. I knew our, I know our state representatives are fighting tooth and nail just to try to get it. But right now, it does not look good. So I think we need to be very, very concerned. That's almost twenty percent of the revenue here that, you know, may not be realized for several years. So let's take.
The VLF, that portion that we're looking at, it's about one point two five million. It's about three percent of the total general fund revenue. I understand what you're saying, councilmember. The state has generally paid it. In fact, they haven't not, not paid it, I suppose, over the last twenty or thirty years. I understand that the state is in a fiscal situation right now as well. But we do believe this is an actual obligation. It's not just San Mateo County alone. There's Alpine and Mono. And very, very soon, probably Santa Clara County as well. So you're really looking at.
But no, thank you for that clarification, but I get it. But I do know our state representatives are trying very, very hard just to keep it. So we may have legal aspects here, but it may not be a reality for a very long time.
So Mr. Mayor, so this is why we're bringing it to the council's attention tonight? That we're on top of it, we're planning for it? And as things develop, we'll bring back to the, to the city council's strategies if we need to to implement those cost-cutting measures. I'll reflect back, you know, after the recession of the early nineties, ninety-two, ninety-three, a very similar situation as we're in today. I don't want to give it, that started the old triple-flip, complex scenario of, of paying the VLF. So we will monitor it. And, and, and yes, we do have concern, but we will, you know, manage it accordingly and communicate with the city council and bring back those strategies as necessary.
Okay, so that's why we're so.
I don't have a crystal ball, but we're, we bringing it to your attention tonight, and we will continue to monitor it. So we're on top of it.
And that's why it's important for us to make sure that we keep our fiscal hold. So, Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you. Couple of, correct me if I'm not getting this correctly. No, go back to the slide, the, the general fund revenues. When I look at this and see that we're going from thirty-nine, six to forty-two, three to forty-one, to me, that's, it is relatively flat, but the cost of everything is going up. So we're, we're already tightening our budget, and the city manager has kept us on a tight budget, basically since he came onboard, and then especially during the pandemic. So it's not like we're doing better. And in fact, we're backfilling the losses that we're getting or could potentially get by some of the new development, by whatever Alexandria might bring or Longfellow might bring. That's how I look at this. So I had a couple of questions. I had this question from the public, and I didn't see it in this presentation, and maybe it comes in two weeks. But we've recently paid off the police station bond, correct? And have we paid off, or we, and we paid off the library bond?
Correct.
I think it would help our public to understand how well we're doing by saying, and give a little, a slide on the paid-off bonds. We still have the bond that was related to the Bay Keepers bond, which is now showing up in the property tax. And that is due until twenty thirty-two or thirty-four?
Forty-three, I believe.
What was it, forty-three?
I think it was, I want to say thirty-nine, but I'll have to go back and check.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring it back. I think the point is, let's make sure the public sees that when we have borrowed money in the past, we have been paying it off. And often, thank you, Mr. Sung and Mr. Williams, we paid it off early. So let's make sure we've got a slide that talks about that. We haven't had goal-setting this year. And my one concern is what's happening around the world is the world's getting hotter. Every year is hotter than the previous year. I'm only an alternate to Menace Clean Energy, but Mayor, I haven't had a chance to update you on my discussion with them about one thing that can cool roofs down, which can keep people cooler in their homes, which is painting their roofs with white reflective paint, certain roofs, certain things. So I'm having a debate right now with staff at PCE on that. But the other thing to keep people safe, well, and let me backtrack. Last year, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Agency came out with a new study that goes by census tract who's at high risk for heat waves. And half of Millbrae is now at high risk for heat waves. And those are the neighborhoods with fewer trees. And I really would love to see that under infrastructure, we've got water, we've got sewer, but we need to recognize that trees in their cooling capacity are as critical in infrastructure as storm, water, drainage, et cetera. And for the public, and I'm always explaining this, we're a tree city because we set aside two million, two dollars per capita for trees, which is forty-six thousand dollars. Is it, could we? But if we don't have that line item, we don't draw the attention both to staff and to us as the future councils on the importance of trees as infrastructure on that. And I know every time I talk trees, you say, "We've got the money to plant trees." But it would be nice, and I would have pushed this in goal-setting, that we make trees as a standalone infrastructure item on that for the various things that trees do to keep people safe in their homes and people safe in their properties on that. So it's just, on that, my other question, so that's my dream list, that if it could come back to us in May or June, that it actually had a line item forevermore on trees. I think it would also help us better position ourselves with the changing data coming in from NOAA. What I had hoped to come from the Social Equity Commission is the fact that where we've got lower income pockets, that we might qualify for more grants. But I'm trying to help us get to the place where it's more transparent in our need for funding for that. The last thing is, we don't really have climate resiliency. Right now, around the Bay Area, cities that are bigger than us, more staff, are updating their, have they achieved their climate resiliency goals? Let alone their climate change goals. One is absorbing carbon and not creating it. The other is making sure people will be safe in heat waves, floods, et cetera. We're small, we're still. We're small, we're still getting there. But I'm concerned that in our budget, that we don't identify unique climate resiliency work. And in my experience, my many decades of working in the environmental field is what is always cut first is library, environment, and then, and staffing on that. So I'm very concerned with all of the climate change impacts and the impacts that we have from gas leaks from the airport and all of the people that cut through us, that we're missing an opportunity by not recognizing these as unique programs. So that was kind of my main thing on there. I wondered in this budget for the things that I'm aware of, does this include starting to work on the High Line Canal Bridge for 2024, 25, which is no longer earthquake retrofit? And that we're going to need to do if we have to get people out of that neighborhood? So if it's in the, in the budget, I'm happy.
Mr. Mayor, there's a section in the capital improvement program that does have a study for the retrofit of that bridge.
Okay. The paper recently talked about Caltrain running eight trains an hour in both directions. So that's 16 trains, which means, and they claim 45 seconds with the gate down at Center Street. But every time I'm down there, it's at least two minutes every time a train goes by, usually longer. So I think in our capital improvement plan, we should be looking at, and I think it would come from the East Side specific plan, a second way out and in to Marina Vista on that. So again, I'm going to be gone in seven months. I just want to make sure that we're got long range planning for how we're going to get people in and out of that neighborhood under the capital improvement plan. I do think, because I've got neighbors now on the east side telling me when they smell chemical fumes, I think under capital improvement, it's a tiny thing. It's more the, the software is we get some monitors up to, to get the, the fuel smells leaking into Millbrae from SFO. And then, other way out. The other, the last one, again, with more trains running, how are we going to safely get kids? Both from the new Gateway Neighborhood, Bayside Manor and Lamita Park, both to Taylor and to Lamita Park School? Because they have to cross the railroad tracks twice. So if we just keep that in terms of both public safety and capital improvement on that. And then finally, I did heat waves, cool roofs, trees. And then the SFO impact, this is not, really fits in the budget. You can say, Anne, shut up, we'll bring this back. But I've been monitoring Millbrae Avenue. I know we're doing some work out there. I've watched how we repaired that road when we first came on. And I've been watching the heavy trucks from Burlingame driving on Millbrae Avenue to get into the airport. So I really think we should be looking for new revenue streams and that should be coming from airport operations. The county has four revenue streams. They put their money in their pocket and spend it wherever they want, and yet we're covering the costs of those. So that's my top, my personal top priority from my last seven months. And then finally, if San Bruno gets their pools done, when I've talked to their council, they're hoping to have a program that we, the people of Millbrae, might be able to use their pools. I don't think that fits in the budget, but maybe there are pool passes so that kids here in Millbrae can learn how to swim, adults can learn how to swim. And when those inevitable heat waves come, they will have a place to cool off. Since there is no place in Millbrae for people to go cool off without driving to the ocean or not on that. Those are my comments on, on the budget.
I just want to assure you that the, the East Side Specific Plan Subcommittee did meet and we did identify a secondary egress from that, from the Marina Vista neighborhood, a priority.
But is that a priority in terms of just getting the plan done or even beginning to do designs? Or it'll be something studied by the consultants that we bring in through the RFP?
Well, we'll continue to work on the East Side Specific Plan, but we did head very early on identified that's a priority for Marina Vista neighborhood.
Again, in terms of capital improvement, it's not until 25.6 or 6.7?
Well, the, the RFP is on the street and I think, Mr. Mogenson, that is due in the June responses to the RFP that's out on the street for the East Side Specific Plan work.
Good, good. We just, we really haven't told the public much about that. But to me, there's many things on the east side that are critical in terms of life safety.
Okay, all right. Any further comment on the budget? Vice Mayor, do you have anything? I want to make sure that I, even though I don't see any hands, I want to make sure if you have anything. No, you're good, all right. Sounds good, thank you. Director Sung, looking at some of those items here, how is our sales tax faring in a post pandemic situation compared to the full year before the pandemic, like 2019?
So our, our actual sales tax numbers compared to the full year before is pretty close. It's pretty close to what it was before. Sales tax actually declined by quite a bit. The first full year of the pandemic, it dropped approximately a quarter. And then it's been recovering at a pretty moderate pace. So the recovery for sales tax has actually done fairly decent.
So would you say we are already back to the pre pandemic level on our sales tax revenue or are you exceeding that?
I would say we're very close.
Very close. And what about the TOT as well?
So for TOT, I, I believe that we're getting back quite a bit as well. Before, we were at a pretty good rate. And then when we had the pandemic, we dropped to, you know, about a quarter, maybe a third of what the TOT was. We basically, it was affected severely. And in, within the last two, three years, we've recovered at a pretty good rate as well, so.
Excellent. So I think we're seeing very, very healthy recovery on a post pandemic on both the sales tax and our TOT. So that's wonderful to see. All right. City managers, you have anything? No, you're good, all right. All right, anything else from anyone else? Do we have any public comments? City clerk? See some slips here, is that?
Not on this item, Mayor, I do not see any hand raised.
City clerk, what's this?
This is for item 11.
Oh, item 11, okay, got it. Nobody online either? Okay, all right. So bring it back to the council. Any further comment on this item? Or do we have any motions to accept?
Move approval.
We got a move approval from councilmember Pappin to accept the capital budget for 24, 25? We have a second from the vice mayor. Any further discussions?
Clarification, we're accepting what we heard tonight. We're not voting on this budget item yet.
I'm sorry, there was a question, this is just an informational item this evening.
It says action, that's why we took the vote.
It's an action, but we're accepting the report of this operating budget.
It's just the phrasing I heard.
If the agenda's action, then it's action. The staff report's informational, so apologize.
My apologies.
So there needs to be an action then if it's not.
I just made a motion and we had a second.
Hold on, hold on, the action is to accept the report.
That's fine.
Okay. Is that, is that the motion?
That is the motion.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Fong.
Aye.
Item number nine, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Item number 10, Millbrae Homelessness Engagement Local Program Quarterly Update. City manager.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Is this also an informational item or are we accepting a report?
I think we do have an action that we need to take on this item.
I'm just trying to clarify what that would be.
Um, well, I guess we will.
It says it's an update.
It's an update, but I believe we also have to make a decision on this item. Is that correct? City manager?
You're with me for just a second. So the report's an action item and on the agenda, it's an action item? So it's an action item, but it could simply be receive a report. You'll see more action items because of the fact, I don't want to box the city council into any direction that they may see fit on policy instead of disinformate. But this item is action. The action can be as simple as motion to receive the report. If you'd like to take a different action, policy development, then you're open to do that as well.
Yes, so Assistant City Manager, Isabel Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Isabel Carlos, Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director for the city. So the item before you is the Millbrae Homelessness Engagement Local Program, also known as HELP, and it's quarterly update, as mentioned earlier. I'm going to be introducing two individuals who are joining us virtually. The first individual is Mr. Marlon Carlos Mendieta. He is the Program Director for Life Moves. And I'm also introducing Ms. Lynette Reynoso, who is the Associate Program Director for Life Moves. They're going to be going, if you can go to the next slide. Yes, so, so Mr. Mendieta and Ms. Reynoso are going to be going over the program overview, the program metrics, the challenges and successes. And then I'll be coming back for the next slide. But without further ado, I'm going to turn over the virtual podium to Mr. Mendieta of the presentation.
Mr. Mendez? Do we get him online?
I promoted Lynn, but I'm waiting. I don't see Mr. Marlon. Oh, there you go, thank you.
I think Lynn, you have to unmute.
He's rejoining as a panelist, so just give him a moment, please.
Here we go. Thank you for, for letting me rejoin as, as a panelist. I appreciate that. So it's, I want to start by saying good evening and thank you to the council members, Vice Mayor Goodman, Mayor Fong, and also to the general public for letting us take some of your time today to present this program that we're actually really excited about. Can we go on to the next slide, please? So the program overview is, is, is pretty simple. The Millbrae Homeless Engagement Local Program provides after hours outreach to unsheltered individuals throughout the city of Millbrae and the adjacent areas. We serve singles, couples, families, basically anyone that we see out there that appears to be experiencing homelessness. The funding comes from the city of Millbrae and also the county of San Mateo's working together to end homelessness innovation grant program. Can we go to the next slide, please? So our staffing includes two full time case managers that conduct this outreach. And their typical schedule is from 3:30 PM to 2:30 AM. And this is what makes the team unique amongst our outreach teams. They are the ones basically at the end of the transit line for the people that are experiencing homelessness. They are the ones that are there to receive them. And if they have beds to offer, they offer them beds. You know, I think the experience that they have is that they're being greeted by two case managers that are relatable and kind hearted and are going to offer whatever resources they have available to them. And so far, we believe it's been successful. We could go on to the next slide, please. So let's talk about our metrics, our performance data. Our goals are across the top of the chart and our actual year to dates are at the bottom of the chart. So we, we aim to serve 150 unduplicated individuals. And at this point, year to date, we are at 133. We provide case manage, we aim to provide 36 individuals with case management services. So far, year to date is 78. Placements into temporary housing, and I should also disclose into shelter and other programs that are temporary. We aim to place 45 people in these types of programs. So far, it's been 178 year to date. And finally, placements into permanent housing, we aim for five. And we have placed five people into permanent housing. Next slide, please. Thank you. Our demographic data, I, I will say that there are some things that stand out about this in terms of the factors that people are dealing with. We have domestic violence survivors have disclosed that experience at 20% of respondents from surveys that we distribute. Chronic health conditions, 40%. Physical disability, 32%. And substance use, 39%. So I think those would all be somewhat expected among the, the community that's experiencing homelessness. I will say that I feel like the mental health conditions are under reported as at zero, which is, is, it's somewhat unexpected. But at the same time, when you have surveys being distributed from 6:00 PM all the way to 2:00 AM in the morning with the encounter individuals, like there might be a trust issue that people are maybe not comfortable at that time talking about mental health conditions. So we do see some, some things that are important here. Let's go on to the next slide, please. In terms of demographic data, I was informed that at the previous meeting, the previous update of this program, people requested, how do the demographics of age compare to other life moves programs throughout the county? And so the, the one of the, of the left with the green header is for the Millbrae program. And then with the gray header, you see for other life moves programs in San Mateo County. We do see that the Millbrae program does trend a little bit on the younger side, 25 to 34, 35 to 44, whereas other life moves programs, the more significant categories are 35 and above. We're not sure why that is, but we did want to, you know, that's, that's kind of circling back with that information from a previous request. We do see with the demographic data that black, African American or African is at 58%, which is a very high number. We also see that white is at zero. Now, again, we are conducting these surveys at, you know, from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM in the morning. So they're, they're good indicators, but I will say it's not like a scientific survey. So we take what we can from this, but we do believe some numbers are being under reported in this case. And finally, with ethnicity, we see that Hispanic, Latino or Latinx is at 32%. And we also see that 28%, the data was not collected or was not volunteered. So next slide. When people are asked of these, on these surveys, how they arrived at BART. 15 declined to offer that information. Eight offered, you know, said they arrived via BART. But I think this is just confirming what we already know, that the BART station, it's a transit hub for various types of transit and people are just passing through and finding somewhere to stay. So eight, eight of them came through BART and the rest are, as you can see, are coming from different means of travel. How long have you been experiencing homelessness? I think the two biggest categories are 16 respondents say they have been homeless for three or more years. Nine respondents said they have been homeless for one month or less. So there's no, I think it's, what it's indicating to us is there's a wide range of, of experiences in terms of the, the people that we're encountering. I think that's, it's just significant to look at. We're seeing people, significant numbers on both ends, recently homeless and also long term homelessness. Next slide, please. Again, this top one here is what is, what is your city of residency? We had one person specify Millbrae. This is just confirming again, the trend that we see that the Millbrae station is a transit, a transit hub in terms of transportation, but also in terms of people just passing through and trying to find a place to stay. I would say that some of these cities are also representative, the numbers of, of where we place people into certain shelters that are located within some of these cities. What city do you plan to sleep in tonight? You kind of see that there as well. Only four people plan to stay in Millbrae. Everyone else is planning to go elsewhere, including South San Francisco and higher numbers. We could go on to the next slide. Okay, on this one, I, I think what I'll do to keep this one brief is, again, these surveys are done when, when the case managers engage them in conversation and sometimes are able to offer them services, including shelter beds. And that's why I think, where, where will you be sleeping tonight? We see a high number of people indicating emergency shelter. Most likely, they were engaged at a time where they had shelter beds that they could offer. So that's why that number stands out. Where do you usually sleep? Outside of shelter. It's a very similar number there. So I think what this points out to me is that when there are shelter beds available, people are going to take them. At least that's how I interpret the numbers. That's my takeaway from this one. Next slide, please. Okay, and for the rest of the slides, for the next few slides, I will hand this over to Lynette Reynoso, the Associate Director of the Homeless Outreach Team. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for having us. My name is Lynette. I am the Associate Program Director for the Homeless Outreach Program. I will like to highlight some challenges and some factors impacting the ability to give services. So shelter capacity, right now we are seeing up to two to three week waitlist for clients to enter shelter. Lack of housing vouchers and subsidy housing providing to clients. Overall demand versus services. So the photo on the left is a photo of our case manager engaging with individual. And the photo on the right is a representation of people waiting for services due to capacity. Next slide, please. So resources needed, medical and. Medical and mental health support. On-demand services like street medicine and alcohol and other drug services, and mental health services such as Heal, which is homeless engagement and linkage. Day staffs, case managers, to be able to continue case plan when most services are available. The night team is very limited with services because a lot of services are closed during that time. Long-term temporary housing solutions. Long-term shelter stays and additional motel program partners. Up to two-week waitlist for shelters currently, we are seeing. Additional overnight shelter options. Right now, we only have very limited beds available overnight, so we can benefit from additional overnight shelter options. Next slide, please. Some successes. The elimination of the county of San Mateo residency requirement. Before January of 2024, there was a 90-day residency requirement. Now, there is only a one-day residency requirement. Strong relationship with police has allowed us to engage with more individuals. Building collaboration with BART's crisis intervention team to discuss high-needs clients that frequent Millbrae BART. This allows us to understand the population that frequents Millbrae BART. Relationships with shelter staffs have allowed us to place more individuals into overnight beds with minimal disruptions. We have housed, five individuals have entered permanent housing due to a huge collaboration with our day team, which is a huge success for the Millbrae team this quarter. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Yes, thank you to the life team, the Life Moves team. So with the next slide, as you know, the HELP program was funded as an 18-month program, and it was an extension of the very successful pilot program that established an effective model allowing the delivery of critical, real-time shelter, housing, and health services to the unhoused community, primarily in the Millbrae Transit Station and the downtown areas. So HELP was funded in part by city funding, $100,000 from the city's general fund, $42,469 in in-kind support from the city, and $370,572 through a county of San Mateo Working Together to End Homelessness Innovation Grant that the city applied for. And in order to continue to operate the HELP program in January of 2024, the city applied to receive Measure K funding from the county of San Mateo. Although the application met the funding criteria that was established under Measure K, it did not get selected for funding. Staff separately appealed directly to Supervisor Pine to fund the continuation of the HELP program, albeit the county board of supervisors approved the recommendation to fund nonprofits that would establish regional homeless outreach teams, and they would provide services to the unhoused. So city staff believes that if this happens, this will likely significantly reduce the services for the unhoused in the Millbrae Transit Station and also in surrounding areas, and it may potentially increase homelessness activity in those areas. So during this period, staff also applied for two other separate grants, one from the California Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness. It was an encampment resolution fund that was available, and a second application to the county of San Mateo for Measure K funds. Neither of these applications were awarded funding. So in effect, as of July 1st of 2024, the HELP program will not be sufficiently funded for operation. And so at this time, staff is seeking direction on the continuation of the program. And there's a couple options here that we've listed for consideration. The first one is to continue to seek future grants and partnerships to operate HELP, and this option could result in a lapse of services to the unhoused population until we can secure that funding. The second option would be to continue to appeal to the county board of supervisors to assist with funding for the program. And of course, we could also engage in both simultaneously, if that's the direction. This concludes the presentation, and we're happy to take questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Questions from this council? Ms. Pappin?
Thank you to Life Moves. You guys, fabulous program. Really, really done amazing, amazing work here. This is kind of tragic here, not receiving any county funding for this. Have we, or can we reach out to BART in any way, shape, or form? Not that they're bleeding money, which they're not, but they are definitely impacting the situation.
So a little bit of history on that. We have worked with BART in the past. They do have regional HOT teams, homeless outreach teams, acronym for HOT. At that time, approximately four years ago, the cost that they wanted to charge the city of Millbrae was $200,000 for a once-a-month visit from a HOT team to the city. We just thought that the cost-benefit wasn't there.
Once a month.
Once a month.
So Lynette and Marlin, you guys said you do have some interaction with the BART HOT team, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Can you elaborate on that for us?
Yes, so there is a mental health provider that is there during the evening shifts that we collaborate with here and there. I'm not sure what their schedule is, but I know that there is some layoffs between their schedules, so that it does leave room for partnerships. I know they do have their crisis team on BART as well, but they do cover all the BART programs, I believe, so from Daly City to San Bruno and Millbrae. So I'm not sure how often they collaborate with them.
Okay, I think, if I may.
Yes.
That's the problem, right? It's the frequency that unfortunately, in a situation like this, a program that is working because we have Life Moves social workers out every day at the BART station to address these issues. Unfortunately, without the funding or getting into, you know, regional partnerships, unless they fund it, and we have full-time people at the BART station, we're not going to see the results of the Life Teams program and Life Teams personnel that, you know, have resulted. So we've done all that homework. That's why we went to Life Teams with the funding. It is, it's a frequency. Talk about the programs, and yeah, they, we can readdress it and request more resources, but we need people here at the end-of-the-line station for this to be effective.
Yes.
And I'm curious, is Life Moves working at any of the other BART stations within San Mateo County?
As of right now, no. We are only working at the Millbrae BART through the HELP program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Ms. Galen?
So I have a lot to say about this, and I will, I'll try to be as concise, but also as thorough as possible. Thank you, Marlin and Lynette, for your presentations. As always, you know, I'm a huge supporter and advocate of what Life Moves is doing in Millbrae, and we, you know, Life Moves and this partnership and the plan, we've been smart. We not only can say we think and feel that this program is successful, but we have the data to prove it, and we have all our quarterly statistics to prove the success of this program. I've had conversations with our city manager, who spoke with the county and the Board of Supervisor Pine's office, and I've reached out to Supervisor Pine's office about this as well. So it sounds like what's happened, and I think this was in the staff report, but not in the slides, there's other cities in the county that have this similar program, and none of us got funded, and that the Board of Supervisors is looking at kind of bringing resources together and having a county-wide program partnering with the same organizations that are doing it now. They refer to it as HOT 2.0. So I'm hoping that means that we're looking at a transition of a responsive HOT team instead of that type of model to the model that we have with Life Moves, where we're in the community, building relationships. So it sounds like the two steps that the county is in the process of right now is building the kind of zones of where the HOT teams will be allocated and figuring out the timeline of when that will start. And one of the ways they're figuring out the zones is that they're having the organizations on the ground, the current HOT team, and the Sheriff's Department and Police Department's doing counts. I think we should find the best way for us to advocate that that's not the only way that the count is being done. We have really great statistics here on a quarterly basis of how many individuals we are engaging. It's much more thorough than a point-in-time count, and I think this really needs to be considered as they look at our zone and our area and the allocation of outreach that we have here. I think there needs to be transparency and communication with all the cities that have lost these funds. So as the county's working on this plan, work with us, city, so we have input throughout the process, and we have a role to say before the final vote goes to the Board of Supervisors. So I don't know how that looks from us, whether it's a letter or all of us having communications, or the city working with Board of Supervisors or county staff to really make sure we have input in what this final program looks like, if this is the direction the county's going. Things that I would like to see in the final plan is, you know, I just mentioned the data. We have incredible data. I think this new program that the county rolls out should look at the same statistics in each zone, continue to provide our city councils the quarterly updates, continue to provide goals for each zone area and measuring that we meet those goals, continue to have the monthly case conference calls with city staff and council members being able to join those case conference calls, so we know what's happening in our city. And continue this relationship-building model that we know is successful versus the reactionary model, and also that even though it's a county-wide model, that there's dedicated staff to those zones. So it's not like this week, we have this staff, and next week, we have those staff. We know we need the same dedicated people in our area to build those relationships. That's what makes the model so successful, right? And I think we need to take this opportunity to advocate for increased services, not just nighttime, but let's look at 24 hours, let's look at weekends. And then I think the other piece is, as they look at timeline, you know, if it's going to be something they start right on July 1, then we don't have to worry about a gap. But if it's something that's not going to start for a while, then going back to the questions here on the slide about how we address that gap. Is that enough?
All good?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Anne Schneider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Life Moves. It is a pretty incredible program, and this is really sad. Sheriff Corpus was at our bike rodeo on Saturday and also shared that the county did not fund their human trafficking. I don't know if it's completely funded or partial-funded human trafficking, which is another thing. We're having the Super Bowl here in 2026. When we had the Super Bowl before, Councilwoman Pappin and I were on council, we were specially trained here in, because of our proximity being a train station and SFO. So for the county and the Sheriff's Department losing that human trafficking, one can only assume that we're going to see more of that then at our station. So this is sad all the way around. In terms of action steps, the, can't remember if it was the Chronicle or the Mercury News in the last 18 months did a big, it may even have been the Sacramento Bee, of the effectiveness of the BART HOT team. And I believe at that time, Life Moves here in Millbrae had been operating six, seven months, and we had housed more people with a couple, plus the startup costs, and they had housed two in the entire system. So I think it would be good for us to pull out that study, that newspaper article, and make sure that our county supervisors understand that these HOT teams are exactly what you said, they're reactive, they're not building the relationships, they're not developing the trust, they're not effective. In terms of the four regions, it's north, central, south, and coast side. Millbrae historically is sometimes north and sometimes south. So we should figure out, are we better being north with the other BART stations and the train, or are we going to get lumped in with poor Hillsborough and all of the homeless that they have in the central county? Sorry, this is just, it's absolutely phenomenal when Supervisor Mueller said on September 12, 2023, that, wow, he did not know we had a problem at BART, and the county should be helping on that. And I know that some of our Millbrae activists are looking at that, and unfortunately, that language was not incorporated in the resolution, nor was it in the motion on that. But we should go back and study what was said at that Board of Supervisors meetings, like, oh, wow, the Board of Supervisors realized we're an end-of-the-line BART station, and now they have forgotten that again. In terms of funding, you know, it's hard to do things on grant funding, but I have been, as the week that I spent with my leg up in the air, had ankle surgery, looking at community development block grants. And plus, with my Cal Cities work, I've met other counties where the counties get the community development block grant funding from small cities and actually give it back to the small cities, Sonoma, Los Angeles, and Santa Clara. In Santa Clara, there's a Councilwoman, she's on the team that helps allocate the community development block grants. Here in our county, at least since what they've been talking about in their Measure K, they've combined CDBG funding, Measure K, and home funds, and I haven't dived into the parameters of home funding. But I think we should immediately make a request, especially as an end-of-the-line BART station, for our allotment of community development block grants. I would prefer that we use those to fix up seniors' homes that need, so they can stay in their homes, but that should be a funding source that we should have always been getting on that. So I actually also reached out to Supervisor Pine and have not heard a word on that one. I don't expect that I will. But community, there are examples throughout the state now of big money for small cities getting to small cities where we can deal directly with those problems. Maybe that's one way we can bridge this gap in terms of, and I think your question on June 30th is in less than two months. What happens on July 1, depending on what the county's going to do, I think then we're probably going to need to have you come back to us with a budget assessment to figure out at least how we can keep this going for one more quarter while the county figures out what it's doing. I don't see any other way. We cannot stop simply on June 30th with the impact that the unhoused have on our business community and our residents here. I had a friend who had just had hip surgery, and a woman threw rocks at her. She was brought into the program. She's back in Millbrae now. She's not throwing rocks, she's in better shape, but she is shoplifting. We simply cannot not do something.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have your hands up?
Yes, thank you. Going off of what Councilwoman Snyder just mentioned, that we can't afford not to do anything, and obviously, this is a tremendous concern for our community, for our residents, and I think the transition or the ramp-up of a county-run program should not fall on our residents, on our homeless, or on our city solely. So I think making sure that as one of these options to consider is that there is some type of bridge funding where the county does acknowledge this need for Millbrae to, you know, be able to continue to support of our community and our unhoused. And also to address this, I think we should also add some other options to ensure that our lobbyists are made aware of this concern. and making sure that they're exhausting all avenues, whether it's state or federal opportunities to take advantage of, not just the homelessness outreach team support funding, but also substance abuse, mental health support funding that might be made available to us. And also taking advantage of having council members be able to be a part of this process and reaching out not just to our county elected officials, but our state and federal elected officials to make sure, just as we've done in the past, whether we're talking about cleaning up the area that was supposed to have been cleaned up by the airport to alleviate any future flooding. We reached out to our federal colleagues, we've reached out to our federal colleagues with regards to the parks and our state colleagues around the parks in our city. So let's make sure that we explore every option and we add those to our, to our options to consider. So I acknowledge the two that are there, but I think making sure that we're still looking at those, but adding the other two options where our lobbyists are exploring and creating opportunities for council to be more active in making sure that we continue to hold our elected officials accountable, but also making sure that the county understands the impact on the city of Millbrae and making sure that there is some funding to bridge this program from transition to ramp up and making sure that it does check all the boxes that we're currently providing to our unhoused community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
So all been said, now, but I just kinda wanna go back a little bit on some of the slides. There's been a slide that talks about all the unhoused coming to, okay, that's the, hold on, back, one more. That's the one. There you go. So this is the one that shows between March to January 20, March to January 2024? And out of this survey, I mean, I counted all the numbers here. And I counted 54 individuals here by adding up all these numbers. So does that shows that we've surveyed 54 people and they've answers various different residencies within Sematell County, some outside of Sematell County, but they're actively being unhoused? I mean, I counted 54 individuals. Is that one day or is that, what is this? Trying to understand what the time span on this survey is.
Do you happen to know if they do a survey within a couple of days or if it's throughout the year that they do this?
Yeah, so we through, we do surveys throughout the whole month. So each month we conduct surveys every time we are out there and we engage an individual. If an individual is willing to do a survey with us, we will do that survey.
Okay, all right. So, so out of, you know, obviously Life Move have been working on our city for a number of years now. What would you say on average, on any given evening, that how many unhoused personnel? Would you guess, would you say roughly within the city of Millbrae?
So my experience being out in the field, a lot of the folks are not coming, are not from Millbrae. They are coming from other cities, especially out of county.
I understand. But my question is, the head count is, then, how many, how much? Let me rephrase my question. Do you have an estimate? How many active unhoused personnel on a nightly basis would you say happens and exist in city of Millbrae?
Um, that does vary. I know during the winter time it does increase. At the moment, I'm not sure on that. I can circle back with the team and get back to you. But the last time I was out, probably last month, I did see maybe an average, we engaged maybe like an average of like five to seven individuals a night.
Five to seven individuals a night, okay.
Yeah, actually, I could add a little bit more to that. I did have, before this call, I had a conversation with Christian, one of the case managers that goes out to the BART station and the surrounding areas, because I was curious about that too. I think the way he explained his typical day, right? They might have five to 10 people that are regulars that they see at specific places that they check on them regularly and try to engage them with services and see if they have anything to offer them at that time. He explained that there's sort of like waves of people, there might be cohorts or waves of people that come in at, you know, between 10 or 11, and some of them exit the train and then they might hop on a bus and go elsewhere. And then at the end of the, when BART service stops, there's another wave of people that come out there. And so by my conversation with him, he's estimating they might engage in different levels of interactions with up to about 24 to 28 people because of that flow, right? There's some regulars you check on, there's some people that exit the train and hop on a bus and head back in a different direction, and then there's the final wave of people that exit BART, BART service when it stops. So his estimate was, you know, especially on the weekends, we're seeing upper twenties.
Okay. So, but what I'm hearing is you're estimating anywhere between 24 to 28 people a day?
That they contact, not to generalize in the area, but like that they come across and actually have some kind of direct contact with, you know, conversation or offering services, but that they actually encounter in person.
I see, okay.
I would say for kind of estimating for the whole city or region, I think maybe referring back to the latest point in time constantly on a survey, that might be a better way to estimate, because, you know, they don't, they're not surveying the entire, the entire area every single night. They have the specific focus areas and that's where the numbers are coming from.
Okay. If you just have that one more slide, Isabel. The transportation at which they come to the city of Millbrae. So we have 15 of them decline, eight come by BART, eight come by car, some five is biking or walking, three from car or train. And, well, I was gonna get to that, three by hospital discharge and three by bus and two by Uber. I'm curious, how do you define them coming by car? What does that mean? Private vehicle?
Um, that's a great question. From what the team has reported is that it's not disclosed by the individual, that they just, they just disclose that they are being dropped off by a car.
Did they say what kind of car is it? I mean, how do they, do they, do they drive a private vehicle and yet they're unhoused and then they come to the city? I'm just curious as to how, what did that, what did that mean? And then also, and also two by Uber, as in, did they just take an Uber and get off Millbrae BART station and said, I'm unhoused and I just arrived by Uber? I'm curious as to what that means as well.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say like, you know, there might be some, some follow-up questions we could do with the team and circle back with Isabel and share that in that manner. You know, just to speculate very, in a very limited way, my experience when I've been out with the team is that sometimes we see somebody from one city that just happens to be stranded in another one, and sometimes we facilitate a Lyft or Uber ride to get them back closer to where they, they usually reside. Sometimes people will do them favors and give them a ride somewhere else. You can't stay with me, but I'll go drop you off somewhere else. And they'll choose the place wherever they feel safest to go at that time. So there's so many different scenarios, and that's why, that's, I wanna speculate, but in a very limited way, just illustrate that. You know, people arrive there in so many different ways, you know, their day looks very different for each of these individuals. And so there's not, not one single answer to that, but we can try to like get more details from the team for the next round of surveys possibly.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how they get dropped off by, eight of them get dropped off by a car. What car would that be and why would they choose Millbrae as the destination to drop them off? That would be?
Yeah, well, in some ways, I think, and there's something that's been sort of on the back of my mind as I do this presentation. Why do they choose the Millbrae BART station to arrive here either by, you know, by any of these routes, right? To either stay in the area or to like continue their journey somewhere else. In some ways, maybe they feel safer at the Millbrae BART station. So in some ways, that might be a, there's some element of positiveness to that. And, you know, but they're using this as a way to like get here and then figure out how to get to their next location. But again, we can, we could talk about, ask the team for more anecdotal information about that, see if they have any more indication about the types of vehicles. But we also have to remember that people are experiencing homelessness, have friends or acquaintances or family members that have vehicles that may offer transportation, just simply you can't stay with them, but they can do you a favor and drop you off somewhere. That's, I think, something that's, that might happen a lot. I've seen that happen a few times.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification there. So on the funding side of it, obviously, we're all disappointed that the county of Sematell has chose not to fund the Life Move program that has worked so well for not only Millbrae but many other cities here in Sematell County. And it's disheartening that recently, the county of Sematell has just received an award of $14.1 million from the state of California to expand homelessness services and to deal with those small encampments scattered throughout the entire county. Sematell County, it's about, what, about 750,000 people in terms of population? And Millbrae is 23,000 people in terms of population. So if you just, if, just kinda do a little bit of a math on a per capita basis, you know, we're about 3% of the county's population. So, so with $14 million, we should receive about $432,000, our fair share of that $14.1 million of homelessness funding from the state. And that would have been enough to take care of this Life Move funding gap that we're now seeing. I would say it's important for us to restock that conversation with the county of Sematell to ensure that we get our fair share of that funding, especially with the recent award of $14.1 million.
Mayor, I, I love it. That's the grant that we applied for, but they did not think that we had encampments per se. Although the last time I was under Millbrae Avenue, there were definitely encampments. They said that most of our homeless are kind of moving around and not in encampment, so we didn't qualify. But I think it's a good argument.
So, so, and encampment is just a term at which we describe those who does not have permanent housing.
As far as I'm, yeah, sorry.
You know, but Mayor, Mayor, if I may, so, so that is earmarked for, you know, a specific purpose. So, but what that means is when the county is moving forward with the encampment program, that should free up Measure K money that could then be allocated. And, and so I think that that's the way to present it. You know, because I think if we go down a path, we, we have to be realistic, right, on the encumbrance of the money and what it's used for, because that money came from the state with it, with an earmark.
And I understand that. So that's, so obviously, we don't have a vote into how to spend that money, which obviously is a bit challenging.
I think we do have a vote next time Measure K comes up for.
Certainly. But I, I, you know, with all due respect, I do believe that every city should have their fair share of those resources to deal with the encampment that is each city is experiencing.
Yeah, I, I, I just started to butt in here. I, I just want to, I mean, we were thrown a curveball by the county. It's unfortunate, and I wanna make sure that we set up realistic expectations. And, and, you know, can we look at bridge funding? I mean, if that's the motion of the council, we'll certainly go back and do that. I think, you know, perhaps a letter to Dave Pine, who I wish he was here tonight to be part of this as a partner, would have been nice. But something that, you know, shows and, and we appeal, or the council appeals to the board to find the funding, and I know that they can find the funding at the county to, to help us out.
Right. And I do believe that this is a vital program for us, and that we've been successful and been, as the data have shown, we successfully helped many of those folks who needed.
It's not county money. It's, right, I mean, we make the argument it's taxpayer money. It's taxpayer money and allocated. Measure K has certain objectives to it, which the county Board of Supervisors changes every year. But that, that's, that's the irony of this, is that exactly what the board had adopted this year for Measure K allocation, our program with Life Moves meets 100%.
Yeah. Thank you. So one, one second here. Vice Mayor had said hand up a moment ago, but now he took it down. I wanna make sure I give you the opportunity, Mr. Vice Mayor. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, no, it was just, it was related to the questions that you had for Life Move staffs around homeless numbers. And I just wanted to add that maybe they could speak to the different faces of homelessness and that, you know, homelessness could be, you know, individuals self-admitting into the hospital to address that, you know, their homelessness or homeless insecurity. It could be individuals with private vehicles that sleep in their vehicles over at In-N-Out because there's light and it receives safety, or they could be at 24 Hour Fitness or something like that. And just understanding that it's not all the traditional, what you, what we think or what we see on TV as far as homelessness. It could be couch surfers. It could be a number of things. And individuals could be a part of other programs and they exhausted their programs and may get a voucher that will get them to the BART. And they're saying, hey, I'm going home, but really don't have a home to go to. And they end up staying. So it could be a number of things. And so I don't know if that's something you wanted to speak on as, as representatives of Life Moves, just to let us understand. And obviously, this takes on a larger issue of us having a better understanding that may warrant a, a study session on this, but I, I want us to understand that there are so many different faces of homelessness. And it could be family members who come back home with mental illness, living in, in the homes in Millbrae. You know, of students or anything like that, that individuals just don't have the support and families are doing all they can to help their family members out, so.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Anne Schneider.
So process questions. So Councilman Cahillan and I are the homelessness, homeless subcommittee on that. The city manager and I talked, but the, the idea of, of sending one or more letters in multiple directions. You wanna task this down to us and let's come up with a short-term plan of letters. The letters would go out under the mayor's signature. You know, so obviously you would see it before it would come out, but I could see, you know, we can, we can try to work with the county. We can try to go straight up to the contact that I have that is Governor Newsom's homelessness cabinet member on that. And let's see what we, you know, let's just try a couple of different avenues there.
Sure. I think we can certainly have the homelessness subcommittee to make a recommendation. But if it requires the mayor's signature, that means three councilmembers, and I think that warrants an item to be discussed on this dais.
We, we've got time for it to come back in two weeks.
Right, so.
Life Moves, Angie and I can meet with them and figure out what we might be able to do, maybe bring in the Sheriff's Department on that.
Yeah, so come back with some recommendation after.
Sorry, Chief.
Homelessness Subcommittee can have a chance to meet so that this council can discuss possible actions. Okay, thank you.
And try to bring it back in the, Tom, is that, am I being unrealistic? I can't do anything but sit around with my legs, so, but you can tell me it has to be June, too.
I think picking up the phone and calling the supervisor would help also. And, and, you know, elected to elected and saying, you know, hey, we really need, we really need your help on this. This is an effective program. It's been a model, actually, that other cities, you know, over the past three and a half years have, have utilized. So I think, you know, to, to try to achieve one objective, you know, with, with the regional HOT teams, you know, is a good thing, has some merit. But it doesn't help cities. It doesn't help the situation that we're in, especially those that have BART stations, so Millbrae North. And I think there's gotta be a different model that addresses that, because it's not a one-size-fits-all. We, we, we know that that doesn't work. So multiple-pronged approach is what works.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Pappen.
Let's be specific in our request as to the funding gap, the bridge, the bridge funding we need. So in any request we make, and then let's go bicker if we can. The, you know, what's the, there's some big corporations, the Gates Foundation and Facebook.
Meta, yeah.
Meta, whatever. There, there might be some funding available on those sides because it is also health-related, as we can see from the data. So we may be able to get some bridge funding in that way, shape or form, but let's, let's get the number out there that we need and try to expand our search since the county has left us in a lurch or hanging here. and try to expand our search since the county has left us in a lurch or hanging here. We have, the city of Millbrae has really dedicated to Life Moves here when we started this process. And county was helpful until now. And that's really quite devastating. So let's, I think we're all in agreement to do what we can as quickly as we can.
And also, just to, just to tell off of it, the city manager, there are other cities who also did not get their funding requests fulfilled as part of this homelessness outreach program. Perhaps we should also engage with them as well. You know, it's strength in number and asking all the cities to come together and ask, and ask to do a bicker ask.
Mayor, you mentioned about the other BART stations in San Mateo County. I've talked to a couple of councilmembers in those cities, and to their knowledge, they don't have the same situation. I do think it is a function of being an end of the line station. And over the years, I've talked to El Cerrito, just because we tend to be on other committees together. They have a situation. Different BART stations might, it may not hurt. And Councilman Pappin, you might know from MTC, but reaching out is at Antioch. It used to be Fremont, but now it would be Milpitas. Is that where the end of the line is?
Beriasa in San Jose now.
Beriasa. It may not hurt to find out if this is on the National League of Cities first tier group that I attend. This is not unusual for suburbs that have big city problems because of the end of the line station. So this is a national program, which I think, I think you mentioned or someone mentioned, it's probably time to bring in Congressman Mullen. With that, good direction.
All right. So city manager, do we have enough? Do we provide enough direction here?
Yeah, I think so, Mayor. It sounds like there's concurrence of the city council.
That we need to continue to seek these fundings in order to continue this program.
Yeah, you know, and to, I think, Councilmember Pappin's question, you know, we'll seek around one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty thousand in bridge funding to get us over the next three months or so is kind of the goal. I think, on the annual, annual funding, okay.
Or eighteen months.
Five hundred.
Well, then, the period will be shorter.
During my lunch hour, I can put a sandwich board sign on free rent also, is what we, I mean, we have, that's a nice saying, our location and our corporation yard, which worked out great with Life Moves, is our ability to provide onsite. And I did talk to county manager Callagie about, you know, once they get the hot teams up and running, would love to have them housed here at Millbrae, utilize the space that we have as, as one of their teams. So but I don't think that's going to happen July first. I don't know what the timing is, but we'll find that out as well. Get more of a timeline from the county on when they will roll that out.
Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you, Life Move, and thank you.
I think this was, I'm sorry, through the mayor. So action.
Well, I think the action is.
We talked about an action. Do we need a motion for anything?
I think the action is to provide a direction for the homelessness subcommittee to come back to do some outreach with the county.
Do we need a vote on that, just to assign it down to a subcommittee? To take the next set of actions, bringing it to a subcommittee and then come back?
You can formally make that motion.
I can formally make a motion. I, I think your staff has gotten the direction. Do you want to make a motion to direct staff?
We have a hands up from Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, just make the motion to suggest, to direct staff to act in accordance with the comments that were made. The only caveat I have, what was the amount that you were saying for possible bridge money? Are we saying half of what the annual is?
I think we should go for the annual.
Okay, yeah, I agree too, if we, if we need to. But I think just making sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot going too low. So that's all. I just want to make sure, because it's going to take a while to not just have a plan, but they have to ramp up. And we don't want our unhoused community to see a difference in support services by Life Moves.
Yep. I think the full program is eighteen months program, correct? So we'll seek that funding based on the current program length, duration.
Right.
And then we get what we get, I guess.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. So that's the direction. That's the motion.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Enschneider. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahillan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Item number ten, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Item number eleven, La Quinta Inn and Suites transient occupancy tax and general fund impact. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to introduce our finance director, Mr. Mike Sung, for staff presentation.
Thank you, city manager. Right. So the background on the La Quinta Inn and transient occupancy tax and the general fund. At the last council meeting at April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four council meeting, the request was made for staff to bring back a report on the La Quinta Inn and Suites, transient occupancy tax, and the impact to the city's general fund. So a little bit of the background on the general fund. We have a pretty strategic location here at Millbrae. We're right next to SFO, part of the Silicon Valley region. And due to that, we've actually had a very good recovery from our hotels, a faster recovery as compared to our regional neighbors, as our hotels have been in a little bit more demand. So before the pandemic, Millbrae was receiving about twenty-eight percent of its general fund revenues in the last full year before the pandemic from transient occupancy tax. As the pandemic hit, the hotel revenues dropped to about eight percent of the city's general fund around twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and it rebounded nicely to about twenty-four percent of the general fund in the current year. So this kind of is just a graphic as to where we were before. You can see in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, we were around nine million hovering to at ten million. And then there was a precipitous drop when the pandemic hit, slightly, a little bit of an increase. And then twenty twenty-two was a really good recovery year. And then twenty twenty-three, last year, we're almost back and we're pretty close in twenty twenty-four as well. So it should be noted that, it should be noted that the fiscal effect for the La Quinta is actually about five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. This is actually derived from averaging the last three non-COVID years, twenty eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-three. Be disingenuous, and it would really skew the numbers if we tried to average the pandemic years in, as those would really lower the normalized years. So when you're looking at the La Quinta itself, the total direct impact for everything, TOT, property tax, sales tax, business license, is about five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This is just from the revenue standpoint. calculation as to the actual immediate service impact is about one hundred and seventy-two thousand. So the total impact's about three quarters of a million dollars per year. So if you actually like projected this out twenty years, the net present value of this amount in current dollars is about twelve million dollars. That's the actual impact over the next twenty years of what it would mean to lose the revenue from the La Quinta Inn and Suites. Now, losing this funding is going to impact the city's ability to fund the important stuff like public safety, street repairs, park maintenance improvements, pedestrian sidewalk safety programs, senior and youth programs, and other items as well. So with that short presentation, but basically to receive the staff report regarding the La Quinta Inn and Suites transient occupancy tax and the general fund impact. That, we're open for any questions.
Thank you, Director Sung. Council. You tell me if you have any comments, questions. If you don't, then I'll open up a proper comment. Okay, all right. Anyone else? We have, okay, we have Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sung, could you, do you have the number or the percentage of occupancy rate for La Quinta over the last, I guess, year or two?
So for the occupancy rates, for the actual hotels inside the Millbrae district, it would be reported to us if they gave us that information for the occupancy itself. They just gave us.
Okay, so that, so we don't have, but I'm just wondering, is there a way to communicate with them? Have they reached out or have you reached out to them to find out if they're, if we can get that information where that could actually project the numbers that we're seeing for the rest of this year, next year, or the twenty years, depending on the impact of the loss? For example, if they're at, say, forty-five percent right now, and the other hotels adjacent or close by are around that rate, and so they could possibly absorb the loss of La Quinta's forty-five percent, and they would actually be at eighty to closer to ninety percent or closer to a hundred percent occupancy. And in that case, would we not maintain the current TOT of losing the La Quinta if another hotel or numerous other hotels absorb those losses?
So Mayor, because we did do a calculation based on the revenue that we received from TOT on a monthly basis and a search of hotels.com and other websites on their room rate. And we calculated an occupancy of about eighty to eighty-three percent. I think the counties, the county's own appraisal of the hotel was right around eighty percent as well. And I think that's about a year and a half old.
Yeah, and I get that. But my question is the actual, so for example, typically hotels prices, if they're, say, if they're not selling at, you know, full, full rate of, say, one hundred and fifty, they usually go on promo as it gets closer, just to make sure that they do get closer to eighty percent. And so they might end up taking a loss in order to get that occupancy up. And so that's what I'm asking, if we communicate to the hotel to get a more accurate number of where are they? Are they at forty percent? Are they at sixty percent? Are they at eighty-five percent? And then how much of that could and would be absorbed by surrounding hotels within Millbrae? Because obviously, we can't say, okay, this is what will happen in twenty years. If that's the case, we could have done the same with Lucky or Walgreens, and they're gone. And so you can't just project, just because someone is here now, we, this is, you know, that's business in America. You can't just say you, we're dependent on your, your revenue, and they're choosing to leave. And so that's a choice businesses have. And so when can we reach out to them to get accurate numbers, not just to them, but other surrounding hotels to get an accurate number of where they are, the feasibility of being able to absorb the loss, and so that we can properly project? Because you can't, just because they're doing it now, any of those other hotels can say, hey, we're done. We already having the conversations at the hotels over by, on the east side of one oh one, already talking about possibly doing biotech and expanding that footprint and making a smaller, more agile business model with regards to hotels. So people are adapting. If you don't adapt, you die. And so at what point do we start being more realistic in understanding that business models, technology, travelers are more sophisticated, and they want different things out of their hotels that are, some of our current hotels are not able to provide, and business owners are choosing to just get out of the business, like this family. And so, you know, it's one thing to say that, yes, twenty years from now, this is what the number would be, and that's a loss. But you can't base a city's revenue on whether or not something may or may not happen. We have to make sure that, you know, we have accurate information. And so could you speak to that, please?
Sure. The accurate information, and it's on the slide, in two thousand and eighteen, that the exact TOT from La Quinta was five hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars.
Right.
In calendar year two thousand and nineteen, the actual, actual number was six hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine. In calendar year two thousand and twenty, worst pandemic in the history of our world, economy globally was decimated. The TOT was two hundred and one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five. Calendar, this is in the staff report, the actual number, calendar year.
Hold on, hold on one second. But that's not.
I'm just giving you, I'm giving you the actual information. It doesn't matter. I mean, I would, I hope these numbers are this, and it's occupancy sixty-five percent. That means that when it gets to eighty or eighty-five percent, we're going to significantly increase. So but these are the actual numbers. So, Mike, I don't know if you can.
No, I get that. But my question is, if I'm allowed to ask right quickly, because I didn't, the question I asked before wasn't addressed. And I'm not, I don't want it to be taken as being adversarial. I just want the questions asked. I waited for this item to be on the agenda. And so I would have hoped that they would have been anticipated. But the next question is, yes, it shows twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, but twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, there is no guarantee or there is no requirement for a business to stay in existence to the point where we can and should be relying on their service or their, their business operating. Because again, Walgreens closed without notice. Lucky's closed without notice. And so how are we speaking on something and getting in the way and interfering with a business owner, a small business, family owned business, to say, hey, we want out of this business regardless of the impact on our city? That's their choice. And I totally get that it is going to have an impact on us. So at what point do we get out of that business and start saying, hey, we got to control what we can control? And that means how agile are we as a city to make sure that the surrounding hotels are able to absorb that, that occupancy rate to make sure that our TOT is not impacted? That's the question I'm asking. And if you could answer that, and I just have a final question.
Well, I don't exactly know what the question is. So when we do plan the way a local economy works.
Let me stop there. I can tell you what the question is. The question is, at what point do we stop talking about or interfering with a local business, small business, family owned business, and start having the conversation about how our city is agile enough to anticipate that loss or potential loss? And start making sure that our surrounding hotels are able to absorb that occupancy from the closing or potential closing of a hotel? It's been projected to us that that may or may not happen, whether it's through the purchase by the county, or the family just says, hey, we're done. And then it just sits in blight, like every, like the, you know, the seven doors around up and down El Camino, or like Lucky, or like Walgreens. At what point do we as a city say, hey, we have to control what we can control and make sure that we're absorbing this through conversations of existing hotels and make sure that they don't follow suit?
Yeah, well, I guess I would say that within our economic development efforts, we have created growth in our tax base, growth in landing a corporate headquarter. But I think to your question, it is, the difference is what the market is doing versus a governmental agency coming in and manipulating a sale and doing the thing. So that's what we can do to protect our local economy that serves Millbrae's fiscal interest. And so, yes, there's always an ebb and flow within an economy, and an economic development plan and economic development efforts of a municipality are key to maintaining and growing the revenue, not losing the revenue. And this is a governmental agency coming in that's creating the situation that is, that is in our control, where sometimes it's not in our control. So I guess that's how I would answer.
Yeah. And I get that. And so my final question is around the TOT increase that we voted for. And I was just wondering, with the, there's a measure that's on the ballot in November, I think it's called the Protect Taxpayers Act or Taxpayer Protection Act. How do, do we know, have that been studied to see how that would impact? Because it goes retroactively. And so do we know how that will impact the increase that we, our voters approved?
I don't think it has any impact, but I would look to our city attorney. I actually don't think it impacts the two percent increase, because that did go to a vote of the people.
Right. But it's, I think, unless it was passed by a certain threshold, if this passes in. in November.
I don't, I think that's a red herring. I don't, I don't think that that has any impact on us, but we'll look at it.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I kind of would just, as I listen into this, one phenomenon that has been brought up, and I thought it might be relevant to have a greater understanding of, is that to the extent that we do not have control over a certain business, want to get out of business, we certainly don't have control over other businesses picking up the slack of that business, which means we cannot predict what other hotel can or cannot pick up the loss of those rooms, nor do we have control over those travelers who chose to be in La Quinta, whereby these rooms no longer, if these rooms no longer become available, that they would automatically choose nearby hotels within the city. They might have gone to somewhere else, because of not just for the price, but perhaps the location or the prices or whatever consideration that they may have, because you certainly cannot, if we cannot control the business, we certainly cannot control the consumers. So it would be unfair for us to be able to try to predict what the consumer pattern would be, if that makes any sense.
It does. Thank you. I think, I think a big part of it was just around making sure that we're communicating with existing businesses in a way that promotes us understanding what their concerns are and not waiting until they need us, they're talking proactively, that's all. And so I just, we need to make sure that we're, that that's a component of what we do with all of our businesses.
Yes, so we do do that. The businesses in town, we do have a outreach and communication with them, from Lucid to the new corporate headquarters coming in to, you know, other, other companies. Walgreens, I think, we know that that's a national issue. I don't know how many, over thirty, they shut down in San Francisco alone. So, I mean, that's their business model. I don't know about that. And, and, you know, if it, if it happens. But other things we do track, I think John Hutar's organization came out with a report last month, the occupancy rate throughout San Mateo County is right around seventy-nine to eighty percent. And those are hotels throughout, throughout the region. We're doing a little bit better than that. Like I said, we can calculate that based on knowing what the room rates are and what the monthly TOT is. You can calculate an occupancy rate based on the number of rooms a specific hotel has. So we're, you know, like I said, between, you know, eighty and eighty-five percent occupancy. I will say that the new hotel, the residence in that we have good communication with, they're up above ninety percent occupancy. So we, you know, the economy is recovering from the pandemic, and so the forty percent, forty-six percent occupancy is, I think, two thousand and twenty data, not, not two thousand and twenty-four data.
Right, okay. And then we have Councilmember Schneider and then Councilmember Cahalan after.
This might be more for the public on this in terms of hotel tax. The La Quinta, when it was purchased by the existing owner, was seven point eight million dollars X decades ago, and the county did not do a request for proposal, even though they claimed that they did. They instead went out and shopped and found a hotel or a facility that sort of met their needs, even though they didn't know if they were going to put a hundred people, a hundred rooms, seventy-five rooms, or fifty rooms in there. They made, they went out and got a very high assessment, we've got that data, and then they offered ten percent more. So for a building that at the very high end was estimated at thirty million, the county offered thirty-three million. We know that a La Quinta of a hundred and seventy, and that's a hundred rooms, or ninety-nine, La Quinta in South San Francisco had a hundred and seventy-nine rooms in January of two thousand and twenty-three, sold for thirty-one million dollars. So to assume that a hotel that wants to go out of business would simply walk away, they'd be losing their initial seven point eight million plus their, their remodeling, because they had just remodeled it a few years before, and they were doing fine on that. So, you know, the county, the city has to make an estimate of revenue. I'm currently collecting data with the County Convention Bureau of the hotel rooms available in all of the cities in District One, as well as their other sources of funds for those cities, to find out that for us, as Mr. Sung said, twenty-three percent, I think the staff report said twenty-eight percent, but maybe my eyes are misreading. Anyway, it's about twenty-five percent of our general fund is hotel tax. That is not the same for South San Francisco or Burlingame, who have a much more diverse economy and much more commercial land to do the adaptive things that you're talking about doing. We are simply land limited, and we are hotel-dependent on that. So your argument of could we absorb it, what we do know, because the city manager and Mr. Morgensen and myself met with the Millwood Hotel, there were at that time already losing hotel rooms, because without the three hotels, the Fairfield, the La Quinta, and the Millwood, they didn't have the capacity to have their own shuttle from the airport, which is a critical amenity to bring people from SFO into Millbury. We were already feeling that loss, and that would have been my question. Are we able yet to capture that loss with the shuttle that ended on November first or November thirtieth? Like, it was, it was November one way or the other on that. So are we already seeing that? And the other thing to keep in mind, that each of our hotels has a slightly different customer base, you know, unless you're getting to that last hotel room and you're flying in. When I met with the Millwood and talked to the residents, specific types of hotel rooms for specific types of customers on that, and, and who we compete with. But right now, the county chose to get a hotel on it that had a bus stop, that bus stop is now no longer there, and made, offered well over the price for it, using our tax dollars for way over, and at the same time, absolutely doing zero due diligence to the economic impact for a small city, one of the smallest cities and smallest incomes of the cities in the county, period.
Ms. Cahalan, and I have a follow-up after.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I have a variety of comments and questions. I did request this at the last meeting, and I requested it because there was community requests for more clarity and input, and I thought it would be helpful, we've seen a lot of the projections, but I thought it'd be really helpful to see the concrete history and how those projections are being made. So I think that's helpful for the community. There's a quick question that came to mind in conversation in this discussion. With the opening of the residence in, do we know if that is an additional customer base we're getting in Millbury, or if that's had a negative impact on any of our other hotels? Has it pulled some of the clientele to that hotel instead of our existing hotels?
Not that we can see. There's a clustering effect that occurs, you know, within businesses, and I, and I think that a hotel like the Residence Inn actually benefits the clustering of our existing hotels. So we're seeing across the board the monthly TOT increasing. So I would just say, you know, in all, kind of the speculation of this, a loss is a loss, you know, and, and making it up, you know, is, is, is difficult, you know, it's something we don't plan for.
Yeah, I can see how, overall, as a city, we have more TOT. So as a city, we win, how that might impact individual hotels might be different than how it impacts us as a city.
Yeah, I think, not to, I think the goal is, and I think it's been said, is, is our dependence, right, on, as a bedroom community with neighborhood serving commercial, our dependence has to change and shift. And that's what we've been doing by, you know, attracting Lucid as an automotive dealer, so sales tax, right, and, and our economic development efforts, to not be dependent on just, you know, really three sources of revenue. A healthy city will diversify, you know, more, and that's what we're doing. But that doesn't mean that because we're doing that, that we can absorb a loss, because quantify, I think, I think Mr. Sung did quantify what that means as we lose the revenue, especially right now. I mean, the loss of this revenue could otherwise fund life moves, you know, for example, and other things. But anyway.
And then I think just it's worthy of note that as we see that increase in twenty-three and the projection in twenty-four, you know, I think definitely some of that is due to the recovery of the economy, but we also, that's the exact same time period, we had a two percent increase in our TOT and an additional hotel opening up. So there's multiple factors that go into that increase. So I think that's helpful to be aware of. Those, those two items are not in the staff report. And I know we spoke earlier today, and I forgot to ask this question. I'm just curious why it's reported in calendar year rather than fiscal year. I was just curious if there was any purpose behind that.
We, we thought it'd be easier to comprehend, especially the ebb and flow of the deep decline with TOT during the, during the COVID years. So.
And then my last comment, you know, I'm kind of thinking of the arc of this evening and conversations, you know, when we look at how reliant we are on our hotels, such a high percentage of our budget, we hear from EVAC and the work that they're doing around the BID and building relationships with our businesses. Maybe it's, you know, something we can do as part of that process is to build, you know, make a special emphasis on building stronger relationships and bringing together our hotels and more collaboration and communication as a, as a city, as a organization.
This, again, isn't because of that. This is the county coming in.
Right.
But let's be realistic.
But I think, I'm looking at the bigger picture than, than that.
We do. That's, we have meetings with, with hotels. The reality is, we got to face the reality. The county's coming in, they don't have the source of funds, and their government agency closing, I mean, let's, from my opinion, we need to be straight and be forthright about it.
Yeah.
Because as Mike said, I think it's a disservice to the community to do otherwise. And that's, that's the fact. So we can dance around it all day long and speculate and, and, and what ifs, but the fact of the matter is the county's coming in, strong-arming the closure of this hotel. They don't have funding, and we'll wait and see. I mean, that, that's the reality of it.
And I just think, I'm not saying that our lack of relationships is the reason for this. Let me finish, please. But, you know, it wasn't the only hotel that submitted that they were interested in selling in this process. So I think it could behoove us overall to have, to take this as an opportunity to build more relationships, to understand how our hotels are, are doing, not just from our.
We didn't even know the county made that offer to them until after the fact.
Correct.
So, I mean.
And maybe if we had relationships, we would have heard earlier, and if the county didn't tell us, maybe the.
I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true at all. I think the county came in knowing exactly what they were doing. That's why they did the, that's why they did the purchase and sale agreement, and then asked to meet with us. So I think it was bad faith by the county. They should have come to us. So I'll give you an example. When we talked to the city of San Jose and other cities in Santa Clara County, what, what the Santa Clara County did is they went to those cities and said, here's our goal. Cities, can you help us out? Here's the premise of Home Key, here's what Home Key funds. Are there any properties within your city that would, that would be beneficial for this? In Millbury, the county didn't do that, and that is absolutely the fact.
So there are several facts that I want to bring to light here. Instead of speculating what could or could not have been happening, or could or could not have happened, what would be factual is that La Quinta is a functioning hotel that is of active occupancy in excess of eighty percent. Second, I have a great news for the county of San Mateo. The city of San Mateo Marriott Hotel just closed in April fourth with four hundred and seventy-six rooms and a sizable property that currently is not generating a single dollar of TOT. So, County of San Mateo, if you're listening, there's an opportunity. These are factual information. These are not guesses. These are not what ifs. These are not what could have, should have, you know, scenarios. These are what's actually happening today. And so those are the things that I think would be relevant for the benefit of the public to understand. Instead of thinking about, well, what should have or could have happened, this is what's happening today, because unless we all have a crystal ball, nobody can predict the future. But what's factual, La Quinta is a revenue-generating hotel that is eighty percent plus occupancy, and there's a hotel that is a few miles down, four hundred and seventy-six room that is completely shut down.
And if I could add to that, Mayor, that shutdown hotel actually fits the description of Project Home Key.
Exactly. I was going to say that.
A derelict or vacant hotel versus the La Quinta that has never, ever fit the, the description of Project Home Key.
Project Home Key is there to purchase properties that are lighted, dilapidated.
And cause no economic harm.
And cause no economic harm. Councilmember Pappen.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this to us, because the whole fact is, what is the impact on the city of Millbury? And you've spelled that out here. This city is seventy-five years old. We have streets that need repairs. We can't afford to fix all the streets. We can't afford to fix the water pipes, the sewer pipes that keep breaking, all of that. So to say absorbing anything, or other businesses absorbing that, we're still behind. So a loss like this is devastating. And you've spelled out, over the next twenty years, twelve, what is it, how many million? Twelve million dollars?
In, at present value, yes.
Yeah, in value here. And thankfully, La Quinta is still operating. We greatly appreciate that, because it is helping our basic financing here. And when new businesses come in, look, that helps, but it's still not enough. So to lose not only La Quinta, but El Rancho, these are devastating factors here. And we are, you know, Lucky's, okay, Lucky's is still under a lease. They're still having to pay the landlord that. And we hope to maintain that as a commercial base. So we are trying to do all these things here, as well as that one Walgreens. We are struggling here. We are not Burlingame. They make a huge amount on hotel revenue, okay? Different businesses, a grocery store probably is not going to give us the revenue that a hotel does. So the property owner there could sell to another hotel and keep operating as a hotel. But as the city manager pointed out, this is a governmental agency coming in, which wipes the slate clean here. And we don't get other taxes, we don't get other revenues from that. But we do get, or more residents, and more burdens on the infrastructure, more burdens on police, fire, all of that, which we are still responsible for here. As was pointed out in the budget, huge impacts on who pays for all of that. That's absorbed by the city of Millbury. That's what we have to take in. Whether the Marriott makes new money or not, is still not going to be enough. We are constantly climbing to just try to, again, what would it cost to fix all of our streets? Or bring them, not even fix them, just bring them up to a reasonable amount? How many millions? Do you know?
So the question is to bring it up to a level of service of?
Acceptable pavement level.
So we did, we did do analysis, so aggregated. I don't know exactly streets without bringing up our Public Works Director, but storm drain, streets, is right around a hundred and thirty million of need today.
Correct.
For.
Hundred and thirty million in need.
So it's about two million dollars per PCI point increase.
So that's just streets.
That's for streets, but then, for instance, storm drain, we're at like sixty million dollars. So it starts adding.
Parks, you know.
So even if the new businesses come in here, it's not going to cover the expenses that we have. And this loss, which is a significant loss, and to say, let's just, you know, pivot or get others to absorb this, that's, it's not going to help. We can do the best we possibly can here, and we are trying here, but it's not going to make up for this loss. It's not going to make up for the increase in costs. Fire is costing more. We're still trying to get a fire assessment passed just to cover the cost of fire. Police costs more. Paving the streets costs, everything costs more. The inflationary costs are rising for cities. So again, this loss is significant, and it cannot be, oh, we should plan better, or we should communicate better here. We need to try to maintain the businesses we have and grow from that, but is, this is still hurts immensely, because not only is the county coming in and taking this away, we're going to get new residents that need to be taken care of. It's going to, you know, cost more for all our basic resources, our basic needs. So. So again, this is not something that is insignificant in any way, shape or form or can be picked up by another business here. We need to be clear. We were clear when we sent the county a letter as to what the impact is. That's a fact. It's a fact based on what we get from the hotels. It doesn't tell us exactly what your occupancy is. I get that. But it is a financial fact and we have calculated that out. So I think that is before the council here. I think that's the most important aspect of showing what the impact is. That's what the council asked for here. The public has asked for.
Show the facts.
There it is. The facts.
Okay. All right. So, you know, in terms of time efficiency, that we're at 10:46. We've got about 13 minutes. We have...
I know, I know.
So we've got councilmember Schneider and we also have Mr. Vice Mayor's hands up. And then after that, I'd like to take public comment and try to get it done before 11:00.
So the city manager is trying to educate me on the amount of money Millbrae has to care for every resident. And it's $1,760 with the regional average at $3,000 per capita. While I'm recovering from surgery, I've been trying to figure out, you look at some of the other cities that are currently working on their budget and Belmont right now is currently looking at their quality of life. And I'm trying to put together what are the metrics that would prove that? And here, to use Gina's metaphor of climbing a stair, to me, we've been treading water for decades. And that's with love. Staff, you've done amazing job to help us diversify our economy. But we keep losing as, we just keep treading water. We keep staying at the same level. So I think maybe in the future, city manager, or I'm going to try to do it and then I'll run it past you like I'm a grad student. But what are those metrics that, say, we have enough money? Right now, we're at 1,760. We have the second worst roads. We have one of the lowest funded school districts. We have one of the lowest tree coverage per acre. All of these metrics that dictate a quality of life. Other cities have enough revenue that, gosh, South San Francisco's building an indoor soccer stadium. Whoopie. We don't even have a swim program, which means kids can drown because they don't know how to swim. That's that quality of life metric on that. So I just, for the vice mayor and for councilwoman Cahalan, you've not been here long enough to see how every budget year, we're doing great. We balance our budget, but we're not frivolous and we don't have any bells and whistles. And look at the two parks that finally, after 20, 25 years, they're finally going to get a new playground? That's not how other cities are. That's how we are, with the exception of maybe Pacifica. So anyway, it is, we need new and more revenue, as councilwoman Pappin said. Not just keep treading water.
I would add to that, treading water is our costs go up, our revenue goes up. What we're trying to do is get ahead.
Yes.
And that means economic development. And so we've been treading, it seems like we've been treading water, but revenue's gone up, costs have gone up. And as we try to get ahead, that's the goal.
All right. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, a couple of things. The issues, everything that councilwoman Snyder just said is exactly the point, except for the part where we may not have been here. We may not have been represented on council, but we have been here. Whether it's in the city, the region, we were here when the council made the decision to go with the sheriffs versus having a police department or the fire. I've seen that this wasn't something that happened overnight. The situation we're in has, there's been decades in the making and I understand that. Fixing it and resolving it isn't going to be something that's going to be fixed overnight. And I totally understand that. But what I will say is as a council and as leadership with our current city manager and his team, we have to be able to continue to work down this, these challenges and making sure that we're able to walk and chew gum at the same time. Yes, we need to address the issues that of the day. But we also have to make sure that we're creating pathways and avenues to get us out of the situation that we're in, being very aggressive and making sure that some of these opportunities that are there, that we take advantage of them. And yes, funding may be an issue, but we have to be able to do that. And so, and I acknowledge that this item wasn't really for us to talk or squabble about, you know, the past or problems that got us here or how we communicate with local businesses. So I do want us to get it back, focus back on that and listen to public comment on this item, which is the La Quinta numbers. And I acknowledge that. And I thank you, city staff, for getting us these accurate numbers that you're presenting to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Now, in terms of time, we've got about eight minutes left and we've got four speaker slip. I'm going to ask each speaker to take no more than two minutes. And then I'd like to ask the council to give us 15 minutes extension so that we can finish this matter. Yes?
Motion to extend by 15 minutes.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin? Councilwoman Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, good night.
Aye. Oops, sorry.
Aye.
And then Mayor Fung.
Aye.
All right. The city council meeting is extended until 11:15 by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay. So in the interest of time, each speaker, I'd like to respectfully ask that you take no more than two minutes. We have Steve Rinaldi as the first speaker and then we have Albert Yam, Jess Hudson and Clara Chin online waiting. Total four speakers. And we're going to cap that at four.
Thanks, Mayor Fung and council members. I want to speak on the TOT and general impact fund of La Quinta. Make no mistake, this is not about any kind of exclusionary. This is about the actual finances of our city, which are creating a public safety concern. Things that have not been addressed in this great write-up that was provided from our finance director is there's a line item here that says additional cost to city to provide services to new residents. Anne Schneider, our council member, had touched on it. And the way that number was created, Millbrae spends about $40 million a year on residence services. When you divide that number by the 23,000 Millbrae residents live here and then multiply it by the 99 new residents, you come out with that $172,000, $173 dollar cost for the actual new residents that are coming. And that's not accurate. If you take a look at what residents were saying in previous public comment, look at these Home Keys that opened up. Redwood City Casa Esperanza, 4X increase. Redwood City Shores Landing, 7X increase. Milpitas Hillview Apartments, 4X increase. San Jose Surestay Hotel, 15X increase. Folks, we're in the middle of a fire assessment right now. We're trying to shake people down for $200 a resident to pay to maintain our current service levels. You tell me, how much more is it going to cost residents when the new residents, who may potentially be here, come in and are more needy than the current population? How much is that going to cost us residents and everyone here? And what if we need to make a call to 911? Are we going to have our service levels impacted? Those are questions that need to be asked and addressed and they're not listed in that item number there. Another cost that wasn't listed was the two additional sheriffs that we're going to have to fund after the county stops paying in three years. And by the way, in the memorandum, they say that it's dependent on Home Key funds. And if they don't get the Home Key funds, are they going to pay? I don't know. They've said a lot of things in court. So in short, there's a lot that's missing here that needs to be accounted for.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Mr. Albert Yam.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate your continuous efforts on the importance of La Quinta to the future of our community. In county executive Mike Alkis' speeches last year, he referred to the Shores Landing as a very successful example of permanent supported housing. So according to data released by Redwood City Police and Fire Department, since they have converted into a Home Key location, they went up seven times in service calls. In 2023 alone, they had a total of 440 service calls while having a smaller capacity than La Quinta. So I think it's safe to assume we might be, you know, we will be seeing at least that level of service call, meaning, you know, more than one call per day. Are we equipped for that right now? The data with La Quinta is also quickly approaching one year. It's outdated and in need of reevaluation. We should look at the TOT not just retrospectively, but prospectively in considering COLA and inflation. We also need to reevaluate the public safety expenditure. I also think it's also important to look at the impact not on an annual basis. What's the impact for five years, for 10 years? Because the deficit and damage to our city is in perpetuity. Considering Mr. Sung's presentation showed that the public safety expenditure is 55% of the city's general fund, we also need some clarity on how the city will fund this and what the loss means for the residents of Millbrae. I think councilmember Pappin hit it home. Basically, I, we are tired of, you know, paying, Millbrae is the only one we need to pay a premium for the sewage. We need to pay the fire assessment because...
Thank you, Mr. Yam. Okay.
Next speaker is Jess Hudson.
The letter that was recommended by councilmembers Fung, Pappin and Schneider alleges that the county did not address potential concerns brought by the city if a private property owner exercises its right to sell and exit a private business endeavor. However, this is a lie. During negotiations, the county offered $600,000 for three years, not one, as stated in the letter, as well as an additional officer or commensurate payment was offered. The county offered job training and placement for workers. Rather than take this extraordinary deal, three council members chose to waste half a million dollars on a lawsuit, barreling up to $100 million easy on taxpayer dollars for a lawsuit and appeal, as well as $200,000 on a recall of qualified elected officials, when they could have had these expenses covered by the county. Additionally, new residents generate revenue by working, shopping and living here. They also have social value contributing to the community. I question if any affordable housing or any housing at all could impact city services. When will it ever be acceptable to this council's three members and to my neighbors to allow housing to be built or converted in the city?
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Clara Chin.
Good evening. My name is Clara Chin and I'm a resident of Millbrae. I just wanted to weigh in on this discussion on whether other hotels can absorb any losses to La Quinta's occupancy. And the data cited in this financial report actually shows that other hotels are already absorbing those losses. Between 2022 and 2023, the total TOT revenue across all Millbrae hotels increased by about 20%. And during the same period of time, the TOT revenue from La Quinta did not increase. It fell. It contributed nothing to that 20% increase. So it seems to me that La Quinta is already losing business and having its business absorbed by many other hotel options that visitors to Millbrae get to choose from, including the new residents in. And unfortunately, I don't think that the financial report seems to account for the fact that losses in TOT from La Quinta will be offset and are already being offset by increases in TOT from other hotels. Even if all the projections in this report turn out to be true, I also want to keep things in perspective. La Quinta's contribution to the TOT is still less than 1% of the city's total budget. I would gladly pay an additional 1% in taxes to help provide housing for 75 families who need and deserve it. And in my opinion, that's a much more responsible use of my taxpayer dollars than the lawsuit currently underway to oppose affordable housing.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Chin. All right. Closing public comment. Bring it back to the council. Any further discussions? You want to make a motion? Well, no, I think, okay. Any further directions to the staff? All right. So I have a comment. I think that it is important, given the discussion that we have today, and it seems to be, there's a lot of different opinions about what the facts are. And I think it's important for us to publish the facts surrounding the La Quinta issue through, either through some sort of a fact sheet or a website that publish actual figures surrounding the loss of La Quinta and the current TOT and the tax impact that La Quinta has on our city. And there's been some discussions on public comment about legal costs as well. And I think those should also be a part of, a part of the fact sheet and possibly go above and beyond where we are in terms of legal action, what that cost would be, if any, so that the public is fully aware of the financial impact rather than guessing what they could have, should have been at all.
To the point of facts, facts are very important here. To clarify what one of the speakers said, the city did not lie. The city did not have an agreement with the county until after our letter was sent. So that is inaccurate. Inaccurate information causes misinformation and misunderstandings. So I agree that we should present the facts on our website. We should also clarify what the lawsuit is about because there's a lot of misinformation out there. The lawsuit is simply about whether the voters in Millbrae had a right to vote based on the California constitution, which this council swore to uphold. And the judge will say yes or the judge will say no. It's not about the project or what we worked out with the county or anything like that. So we probably would like to be specific on that. The county knew about Article 34. The city of Millbrae did not till a resident brought it to our attention. So the issue is the lawsuit is determining whether Millbrae residents had a right to vote. That's it. So if we can be clear on that front, instead of all the misinformation out there about what it's about and what it's not about, that would be probably helpful. Thank you.
I mean, how about the number of housing units that have been produced by Millbrae? At low income, the amount of entitlements that are in the queue to be built.
Well, and you might want to note that the BAFA, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, is seeking a bond, which will also, one resident said she'd pay more. Looks like a lot of residents may have to pay more. $19 for every 100,000 assessed value, which is, if you have a $2 million home, close to $500 a year that people would be paying to assist in affordable housing throughout San Mateo County and the region. So financing is out there. I did like the mayor's suggestion about the San Mateo Hotel, but thank you very much.
Okay.
You know, Mayor Fung, because this is the time and place to conduct the city business, not out there and all the other stuff that's out there and whatever it is activists are doing, I don't know. But we have the facts here. We do produce housing. We opened 80 low-income housing units with Core. We have over 1,000 housing units, of which 15% will be affordable, that are entitled. We have an approved new general plan. We have an adopted housing element that's certified by the state of California. So we are, the city of Millbrae is doing an exceptional job, an outstanding job. We are being thrown these curveballs by all these regional outside agencies. I mean, tonight, we had two items where the county's thrown us two curveballs and we're managing through it. It's unfortunate. We do communicate with them. I want them to be better partners. But to say, well, you know, you got to go talk to them, you got to do, we are doing that. Our economy and our budget presentation tonight, okay? I will put that against any city right now in San Mateo County. And so the health of the city is strong, given all the other variables and factors. So I would like to discuss the business of the city here and now at a business level. The facts are in the report and the facts are not pulled out of the air. They're not speculation. They're, I mean, I've got a background in economics. I did it for 10 years in the private sector doing just that. I know what the occupancy is, somewhere between, like I said, 83 and 85%. You can calculate that.
So we've got nine minutes and I want to make sure we close this item, so...
But to, to, to councilmember Pappin's comments, she's correct and I support that. I mean, some of the communication is just in error. The document that went out to all of the property owners, that's riddled with errors, so...
You mean the flyer?
The flyer, correct.
Not document, but the flyer?
Or whatever you want. Yeah, flyer, I guess.
Okay. Anyhow, so to the comment about how, when are we going to get back to building more housing? I will say tonight, we just approved the second reading on an ordinance adopting, amending the general plan, the zoning map, to extend the commercial preference overlay that would increase the height limit to enable more housing to be built. So we're putting our money where our mouth is and actually getting things done. Now, we have Mr. Vice Mayor's hands up and then we have councilwoman Anne Schneider right after. And hopefully, we can close it within the next eight minutes.
All right. I'll be quick. This question is for our city attorney. Could you please speak directly to the question of...
Could you please speak directly to the question of the timeliness and the amount of transparency with regards to projecting what cost, not projecting what cost, but acknowledging the cost of legal fees by the city?
Validation action. So handsome...
No, I'm asking, also, it's not about the amount. I'm just asking the city attorney a question of if there's any process and timeliness of which, if there are legal fees with regards to that are used by the public's funds, what's the process for transparency and acknowledgement of that at a council meeting? Whether it's a warrant or legal fees, or where does it show up? But it's not confidential, so I'm asking, when is that projected to the public?
I don't believe legal costs we spend is confidential information.
That's not. That's what I'm asking legal council.
Right.
And if we don't have the answer, if we could get that answer.
Yes, my mic is on. I'm just not sure I understand your question. Certainly, anything you spend on legal costs is a matter of public record.
Right. And is that something that, like we do with warrants and things like that, that we should project to the public in a transparent manner at a council meeting? Or is it just a request that is made and saying, hey, how much are legal costs?
Yeah. I believe it is in your reports of bills and claims. It should be part of that report, and if you ever want it provided in a different manner, I'm sure the city can do that.
Vice Mayor, are you asking the cost of the lawsuit? It's $230,000 is what the expenditure...
Right.
For the lawsuit.
Right. And is that spelled out specifically for the public? I'm asking because a comment was made, and a public comment just a minute ago about the cost, and then the mayor mentioned what the cost is or what it may not be. And so I just wanted to make sure legally, we're hearing not from a council member or city staff, but our...
Well, I know what it is. Because if the question is...
That wasn't the question.
Mayor, may I? It's not half a million.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Back to my question, Mr. Mayor, please. It was not about the amount.
Okay.
I'm just making sure, if you let me ask my question, can I ask?
I just want to clear the question.
We've said it. It's disclosed in the bills and records.
Can you not talk over me? I'm asking a simple question for the public, if I can ask, please.
Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead and repeat your question. Go ahead and repeat your question.
I would just like to have, for the public's benefit, and specifically the individual that spoke earlier, could you please, city attorney, speak to the timeliness of such costs? If there are additional costs, at what time can the public, or should the public, what's the timeliness of the public being made aware of that additional cost typically?
Timeliness.
I understand that it's already projected for the past, or it's already been communicated for the past. At what point, after the cost has been charged or paid, would the public be able to know?
The public can know as soon as the charge is paid. It's a public payment that should be part of a public record, and...
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
And so now to our city manager. So typically, that's usually a month lag time or something around there, or what?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. So we receive the invoice for the previous month, and then we have 30 days to pay typically with a contract.
Yeah. That's all I was asking. It wasn't meant to be argumentative. I just wanted to make sure for the record that the public was made aware of the timeliness of it and understanding the lag time, and that's all.
But that's, I mean, I will say, that's nothing new. I mean, that's just a standard practice.
But that's standard practice for council members and for staff, but not for our public, and that's what the question was for, for their benefit.
Okay. All right. If no further question from you, Mr. Vice Mayor, a council member?
Really quick. The mayor had mentioned a letter or fax. I agree, we've gotten a number, many letters from the public. I would like to make a motion that staff prepare this document, the letters that at least got to me, wanted to have it mailed to every household. I don't know about that, but let's just get it there, get it done with the fax.
Yes, we need to prepare. The motion is to prepare a fact sheet and also on the website so that the public gets to be, could be able to read the factual information surrounding the La Quinta issue.
And you rely on staff? I mean, is there a time? Do you want us to bring it back to the council, or just directing staff to do that?
My motion is to direct the staff to do it.
Well, I already... Oh, did you have a motion?
I made a motion. I've got a second. Do you have any comments?
Friendly amendment, a timeline. The responses that I have to give to the public a lot fall back on a timeline. So really simple timeline, what happened, what, doesn't have to be the specific date. It could be the first week of May, but dates help. Timelines help.
So I'm sorry, I didn't understand what that...
You mean timeline to produce it, or timeline of what?
Is the timeline. For example, I was at a League of Women Voters thing a month ago. Callagie said that he contacted the city. I was the mayor, and he lied. So let's just get our timeline down and stop having people outside...
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Timeline of what?
The timeline of what's happened from...
Circumstances.
Okay. All right.
Include a timeline within, okay.
And then do we also need to accept the report in the motion?
Yeah, we're going to publish it.
Yeah, we, yes, we need to accept the report in the motion as well.
And I accept that.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
You mute it?
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Abstain.
Thank you. Mayor Fung?
Aye.
The item number 11, passed by a vote of 401, with Vice Mayor Goodman abstaining.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it for the evening, and I adjourn the meeting tonight at 11:13.